Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If you please rise and join me for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Which is saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the rule of justice.
Thank you, and before we start the meeting tonight, I'd like to just take a moment of silence on the passing of Krista A. Bear earlier in December. She was a valuable member of our board and also a very terrific teacher, and I'd like to honor her memory by a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on, agenda review.
There we go. We have a request to discuss remote meetings, so I'd like to add that.
Okay, thank you, remote meeting. Yeah, hang on, Stephanie. Can we get Stephanie's on?
We're good. Awesome. I was wondering if we could move under major heading seven subsection C and F to be next to each other since they are similar, there are potentially similar discussion points on those two.
Move this, you want to move the school calendar up?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's fine if the rest of the board is okay with that. Okay, we'll do F after we do C. Okay. Okay, the next order of business is to approve minutes. The first set of minutes is the November 1st academic affairs meeting, which we couldn't approve the last time because we didn't have a quorum of board members. So it asked the two members that were there, Stephanie and Charlene, are the two members that are a quorum at this point. So I entertain a motion to approve the November 1st academic affairs meeting.
Seconded.
They moved and seconded by, moved by Charlene, seconded by Stephanie, and since the two of you are the only two members, do you both vote in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next set of minutes is the December 6th academic affair meeting, and we're going to have to postpone approving those minutes tonight because the only two members that were present at that meeting was Tim Eldridge and Charlene Seibel, and Tim is not with us tonight, so we do not have a quorum to vote on those minutes. We'll take those up at our February meeting. The next, next is the December 6th school board non-public meeting, the minutes of that meeting, and the members present at that were Tim, Wendy, Jim Manning, Jim Pittman, Charlene, Dana, and myself. Stephanie was not at that meeting. I entertain a motion to approve the non-public meeting of December 2nd. Moved by Dr. Jim. Seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, Tim is not here tonight, all in favor, Charlene, I'm sorry, Wendy? Stephanie?
What's name?
Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes are as well, thank you. All right, next set of minutes is the minutes for the school board meeting on December 6th. There is one correction that we'd like to make to that set of minutes. Can I find it? Okay, it's, the first one is actually on page 2, and it's under public input. Bree Burbank spoke at that meeting, and she wanted to make a small adjustment to what was said. In the last line of that, Ms. Burbank concluded that she thinks it is poor use of law enforcement having police officers at our school board meetings and issuing court summonses to parents. And she just wanted that issuing court summonses to parents to be added to the minutes because that's what she said. And her, her words were pretty extensive, so she just wanted that added, if that's okay to add. And what was the other one, Jim? Oh, yes. On page 4, my name, in the very last motion establishing a search committee, my, my last name was misspelled, it's W-I-D-E-R instead of M-E-R. If we can just put an M in there, that'd be fine. Any other corrections or omissions on that? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of December 6th, that's amended. Okay, moved by Jim Pittman. And seconded by Dr. Jim. Okay, all those in favor, Wendy? Stephanie? What's name? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes are as well. Okay, the next, next item is approving the manifest for this evening. The manifest being signed, the accounts payable manifest, total $1,876,438. The payroll manifest is $2,725,391.3. Total manifest being signed tonight is $4,601,434.11. Okay, moved by Jim Pittman. Seconded by Dana? Okay, all those in favor, Wendy? Stephanie? Okay. Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes are as well. Okay, that takes care of that, public input. Oh, we did that. We did the non-public January 3rd one. Yes, no? Okay, well, I, I sort of had it checked off, but if we didn't, well, let's do it again. Oh, I think you're right, December 2nd, I'm sorry, I, I apologize for that. The approved, the search committee meeting, that's right, the search committee meeting on the 3rd of January. The members that were present at that meeting were Stephanie, Jim Pittman, Charlene, Dana, Kelly Tivnun, and myself. I entertain a motion to approve the search committee meetings of January 3rd. Moved by Charlene. Seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, all those that were present, Stephanie? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? Kelly? And chair votes are as well. Thank you. All right, now we can go to non-public, we'll do 15 minutes. We'll do, we'll start with someone in this room who would like to speak, and then we'll go to the other room for somebody that would like to speak. Please try to keep your comments to, you know, as brief as possible so as many people can speak as, as they want to. Yes, sir, and go right up to the mic and speak right into the mic so we can all hear you. No, yes.
My name's Larry Borland, live on Stoddard Road in Wolfboro, and I meant, the board can relax because I'm offering help. I'm introducing myself and offering my time and expertise to the board and administration. My prior, prior to retirement, I had two careers. Forty years as a pediatric anesthesiologist and an intensivist, and eight years as an elected school board president in southwestern Pennsylvania. My previous school district had much in common with this one. But, on April 9th, 2014, I was called to utilize both careers. Rank on regional high school students were attacked in the worst mass stabbing incident in North American history. The actor, a high school junior, was brought down by a high school senior and the oldest administrator in the school system. But not before 24 were injured, five receiving wounds, which were normally fatal stab wounds to the liver. Several bled out and arrested on the scene. But, all survived because of extraordinary EMS and trauma hospital care and perhaps the intervention of a higher being. Such an impact, event impacts the entire community. Expertise and knowledge of both local and national resources in both school crisis events contributed to minimizing what are the normal cascading problems that routinely follow such an event. The sequelae are ongoing even though it's eight years away. A few more mundane notes. We held our school budget increase for over 20 years to lessen inflation and risks. We did this while increasing the number and quality of academic programs as well as maintaining and increasing school participation in the arts and sports. Finally, the most important thing, which I know you know, from a list of candidates the board selected and hired a younger man to be superintendent. Subsequent and several years into his tenure at our school district, he was voted by his peers to be the superintendent of the year for the entire state of Pennsylvania. This action, which is an action, is responsible for the school board, as you know, the most important step that we accomplished to ensure years of improved academic excellence, career support, safety, and fiscal responsibility. I'm at your service.
Thank you very much. Okay, if there's someone in the other room that would like to speak?
Can we just check the sound, can you hear us? We're hearing a talk back in here.
We can, we can hear you fine.
Okay, is it echoing because we hear, I hear myself twice, that's all. All right.
We're okay.
Okay, great, glad to hear it. Good evening, Jessica Williams, Wolfboro. It has been 665 days since March 16th, 2020, when our schools were first closed due to a novel virus which has come to be known as COVID. And a most of us would likely erase from our collective memory if it were an option. It seems to be the topic that dominates the majority of conversations, even when doing normal things like going to dinner with friends, celebrating holidays with family, or discussing things around the dinner table after a long day at work. 665 days ago, we didn't know what to expect. We felt the unfamiliar dark shadow of anxiety creeping into our thoughts. Our amygdala activated, our world changed permanently. Many of us became obsessed, entranced, glued to the news, watching, reading late into the night, researching, worrying. Those of us who were paying attention and questioning the narrative instead of hook, line, and sinker, believing in the bought and paid-for network news, began to see cracks in the story. Logic began to overtake emotion despite the intentionally divisive political turmoil unfolding on the nightly news. The word "super-spreader," "social distancing," "contact tracing," and "anti-vaxxer" entered our lexicon. Arrows appeared on the floors of our supermarkets, signs appeared in shop windows, and scowling eyes appeared from the masks when encountering the unmasked. People were dying, people are dying. The mask became a symbol of either empathy and love to some and tyranny and control to others. And here we are, separated, divided, and yet the pandemic continues to spread with the newest variant, Omicron, dominating over 95 cases in New England according to genomic surveillance systems. So where are we now, here, in this room, in this school district, in your heart and mind? At the last meeting, Charlene Seibel, wearing her trusty cloth green mask, called those of us who think masks are cruel, useless, and oppressive, said those in the lovely music room that we are breathtakingly ignorant. Well, perhaps, Charlene, you will tonight stare into the camera and tell Dr. Leanna Wen how profoundly disappointed in her opinion you are when she said on her Twitter feed cloth masks are little more than facial decorations and should not be considered an acceptable form of face covering. Perhaps this Dr. Wen, who received her doctorate in medicine from the Washington University School of Medicine and holds two additional master's degrees from Oxford where she was a Rhodes Scholar, should be silenced by the technocratic elite for her voice of dissent, based in logic and reason, something this board has lacked and something I personally cannot leave alone in light of the developing and changing science. This board has shown nothing but cowardice to parents, community members, and the students they are tasked with protecting by relying on bought and paid-for scientism, which is not science. The science today is not the science of 665 days ago, yet many of you are still stuck firmly, perhaps permanently, to the dogma you developed through the emergence of the word COVID. Children have always been at almost zero risk from COVID complication. The annual flu or driving in a car more likely to end a child's life than COVID. I may not have said it well with my first time at this microphone, but I was not wrong. Our children belong in school, and the mitigation strategies this board continues to adopt have irreversibly harmed their intellect, their bodies, and their developing minds. Not once have I heard this board discuss improving the general health of staff or students. Things like fresh air, sunshine, quality food, rich in vitamins and minerals, have not once, have not one of you brought up once. And not one of you has brought up the topic of naturally derived immunity from a community-acquired case of COVID, no. You have barred them from school for days, weeks, months, in the name of quarantine. You have encouraged mass vaccination of children, which is statistically more likely to harm a young child than help prevent death from COVID. You have created discriminatory policies that punish the unvaccinated and continues to contribute to the spreading of COVID in our school community. For instance, there was a child in high school, vaccinated, of course, whose children both were home with COVID, yet he was exposed and allowed to come teach in the classroom because he had taken jab one and jab two. Guess who came down with COVID? Guess who probably fed it to students in the classroom while wearing his useless cloth mask? Wake up. The vaccines are not working the way we had hoped. Masks are not working the way we had hoped. The virus has weakened now with Omicron. It is a replication factor of near 10 which makes it impossible to contain. There have been nearly 500 cases in our school district population since September 7th. That's approaching 20% of staff included. Omicron is going to hit the school hard in the next couple of weeks in terms of infections.
Thank you, Jessica, Jessica, that's, Jessica, that's over five minutes, thank you.
It is unlikely to cause severe infection in those who acquire it.
Okay, we'll move to someone in this room, please.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Nicole Zoko, I am the town administrator for the town of New Durham. I'm here today to advocate for the residents of New Durham to utilize the New Durham Elementary School for its local, state, and federal elections. I'm also here asking to open dialogue between the school board and the town of New Durham in hopes of working more collaboratively in the future. I am aware that you did receive the letter. I have heard that some of you have not taken well to that letter, so I want to speak to a little bit of that, but ultimately, I only have so much time standing here, so I'm going to address a few other things first.
It is on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so our, well, so when it was presented to me that it was on the agenda this evening, it wasn't clear if we'd be able to do public input or if we'd be able to speak during that period of time. If we are able to speak during that period of time, I will hold my statement so other people can come forward.
Yes, you'll have an opportunity to speak during that.
Then I will let other people come forward and use the time wisely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else in this room would like to speak right now?
Good evening. My name is Megan Anderson. Excuse me. I'm a coach here at Kingswood High School, and I'm the proud mom of two special needs boys. One who attends Carpenter, and who attends Crescent. I'm also part-owner of two family businesses that both have offices in Wolfboro. We live here, we work here, we pay plenty of taxes here, but we really have no say in when our kids can get educated, and that's why I'm here tonight. One of my boys has been a part of two 20-day quarantines this year alone. That's 40 days he has missed for negative tests all along. As I know, I am not alone here, he is one of many. My other child tested positive once, and 91 days later had a family member test positive. So he missed the cutoff to go back to school by one day. And he had to stay home for 20, we're in the middle of that right now. There were no exceptions. Special ed at home really doesn't exist. You simply cannot learn what you would learn in a classroom over a computer screen. As you know, there are no longer teachers who are teaching remote kids, so they have their amazing special ed folks on Zoom between three and five times a day each. That doesn't nearly cover what they are missing in the classroom. I urge you in the future to consider having some flexibility when it comes to certain situations. When we ask schools to consider these special circumstances for the one who tested only one day over, it falls to the nurse and the head of school, who are very consistently saying we follow New Hampshire DHHS guidelines. So on January 7th, the day after New Hampshire DHHS announced it finally adopted the new CDC guidelines with some changes, I thought, they can go back to school. Not so fast. The superintendent told me, Kathy told me, the board needs to accept the new DHHS guidelines before they apply. So despite the fact we had new protocols across the state, my kids could not be in school Friday or today. Was this not important enough for the board to have a Zoom meeting to get all these kids back in school as soon as possible? There were 10 days between the CDC adopting new rules on December 27th and New Hampshire publishing its updated guidelines on January 7th. Did the board discuss a plan if New Hampshire decided to follow the new CDC guidelines as the governor suggested it would? We all knew this would be a possibility, and I believe the board should have been ready to make a decision or preemptively approve following New Hampshire DHHS guidelines whenever they were going to be updated. I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed that the board wasn't in a position to move more quickly to adopt updated protocols. Every single day matters for these kids, especially after missing so many. Waiting four days to formally adopt state guidelines significantly affects real people. These kids have been through enough, and it's time to put their needs first. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else, anyone in the back room who would like to speak? Okay, we'll take one more from this room, and then we'll, we'll move on with the rest of our meeting.
Excuse me, somebody was cut off, the last speaker was cut off in here. I don't know where she went, she went to figure out what was going on.
The limit, the limit's five minutes per speaker, and she was over five minutes? I have a timer that I'm using, she was over five minutes. Yes, as long as you keep your mask on, you certainly may.
Well, we can't hear you in here because we have to turn the sound system down in order to hear without, because we get so much echo. So you guys cut the last speaker off in this room, and we didn't hear it. She just got cut off, you guys didn't even give us a warning. So I don't know if we can fix that because, you know, not getting, you know, notice is, you know, pretty important.
Go ahead, five, five minutes max.
This board has shown nothing but cowardice to parents, community members, and the students.
Say your name and town, you're from, please.
Ruth Clef, I'm from your town.
Thank you.
This board has shown nothing but cowardice to parents, community members, and the students that they are tasked with protecting by relying on bought and paid-for scientism, which is not science. The science today is not the science of 665 days ago, yet many of you are still stuck, or only perhaps permanently, for the dogma you developed with the emergence of the word COVID. Children have always been at almost zero risk from COVID complication, the annual flu, or driving in a car more likely to end a child's life in COVID. I may not have said it well with my first time at this microphone, but I was not wrong. Our children belong in school, and the mitigation strategies this board continues to adopt have irreversibly harmed their intellect, their bodies, and their developing minds. Not once have we heard this board discuss improving the general health of staff or students. Things like fresh air, sunshine, quality, food rich in vitamins and minerals, and not once have you brought up the topic of naturally derived immunity from a community-acquired case of COVID. No, you have barred them from, from school for days, weeks, months, in the name of quarantine. You have encouraged mass vaccination of children, which is statistically more likely to harm a young child than help prevent death. You have created discriminatory policies that punish the unvaccinated and continues to contribute to the spreading of COVID in our school community. For instance, there was a science teacher in the high school vaccinated, of course, whose children both were at home with COVID, yet he was exposed and allowed to come teach in the classroom because he had taken jab one and jab two. Guess who came down with COVID? Guess who probably spread it to students in the classroom while wearing his useless little cloth mask? Wake up, the vaccines are not working the way we had hoped, masks are not working the way we had hoped, the virus has weakened now with Omicron. It has a replication factor of near 10, which makes it impossible to contain. There have been nearly 500 cases in our district population since September 7th. That is approaching 20% of student, of staff and students. Omicron is going to hit the school hard in the next couple of weeks in terms of infections, but luckily, since the virus now seems to produce only mild cold symptoms, it is unlikely to cause severe infection to those who acquire it. COVID is here to stay, perhaps it's time to let nature run its course and allow parents to choose if children should wear a mask. In fact, tonight, we bring you the validated signatures of 765 registered voters in this community per New Hampshire statute 197-2, which forces a special meeting of the school to reconsider your masking and social distancing protocols in our school. Our kids do not need to wear a mask. They do not need to be stuck in cubicles in the lunchrooms. Our kids need to see their teachers, play with their friends, and learn how to care for their own bodies instead of falling into line with directives from adults who operate from a place of fear instead of intelligence. With that said, our group is not one of the anti-maskers or anti-vaxxers. We fully support each teacher or student or parent who chooses masks or to participate in drug studies. Our rights as parents should supersede your authority to make misguided medical directives over those too young to have a voice in local politics. You have seen your students plead to take their mask off while playing basketball. These kids are not happy to wear a mask, they're hanging with their friends outside of school unmasked, and you know what? They are going to be just fine, they were always going to be just fine. And perhaps, we'd actually looked into the science these kids allowed to develop natural immunity could have greatly contributed to slowing the spread. Perhaps our interventions, although well-intended, have actually harmed society. Now, we have a crushing national debt with each American owing 90,000 to our debtors. What kind of place are we leaving behind for them? Will you consider tonight the bigger picture and stop your selfish greed for authority, your blind attachment to political dogma, and instead consider the young lives you're responsible for? Will one of you make a motion to make masks optional tonight? Because if you don't, we're going to win anyways. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on with the rest of our meeting. Yes. Yes, we need to do closing comments, please. Okay, we're going to move on with the rest of our agenda. Student representative report. Fallon, you're up. Make sure you speak right into it because everybody here, that's great.
Hello? Hello, okay. Student council finished up Wish Up on a Star with a great success with approximately 150 gifts going out to the communities in the Governor Wentworth Regional School District. Students and staff both participated. Mr. Meyer's current issues class raised funds for the tornado victims in Kentucky and beyond. The class got in contact with the National Honor Society and peer outreach. A slogan was created titled "State of Hope." Posters were designed using Canva, and Mr. Nelson's class designed a collection box in the shape of Kentucky. This collaborative effort raised $761, which was all donated to the Red Cross Disaster Relief Fund. Student council has now started organizing for this year's winter carnival. There will be modifications due to the circumstances of high cases of COVID. Prom is also starting to be planned and is certain that it will be held on the Mel Washington boat. Final exams are coming up, starting the week of January 25th through the 28th. The new semester will start on January 31st. The drama program will be starting auditions for their one-act play for their theater competition. Winter student athletes have continued to be resilient despite the dramatic increase of COVID cases. There have been a great amount of honesty by our student athletes communicating how they are feeling and if they are contracting COVID-like symptoms. All sports teams are now wearing masks during practices and gameplay until numbers of cases lower. Spring registration for sports will open on January 15th. Kingswood will offer the following sports, such as girls' and boys' lacrosse, baseball, softball, boys' and girls' tennis, and lastly, track. Mr. House would also like to remind any student athletes that there will be a student athlete leadership team meeting coming up. And if any student athlete would like to join, there is a sign-up sheet right outside his office. In the LRTC, the marketing education level one is preparing for their state competition in February in Concord. Level two is working on their social media certifications. The health and science and technology class have now started their clinicals. Graphic design has been steadily working on their yearbook. Multimedia is finishing up with their night watch series and will start working on their short films. Theater stagecraft has had a huge success with the production of Mamma Mia and are now working up on their upcoming one-acts. Computer technologies are working on cybersecurity. Careers and education continue to work with the Magic Moments Daycare and are now traveling to Carpenter Elementary School on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Automotive technology program level one continues to work on restoring a '71 Honda CB350, and level two is working on converting a standard transmission to an automatic transmission in a truck. Precision manufacturing and construction trades are traveling to marker space and building railings in balusters for their main space stairs. Culinary arts have been running the restaurant. I heard COVID restrictions have been a blessing in disguise for them because they've had to shut down the buffet, but are now gaining a wealth of knowledge with taking reservations, ordering and preparing food for a certain count, and the restaurant numbers are higher than they ever have been before. Collision technologies are now doing bodywork on a Ford Explorer. Agricultural science handed out around 80 reeds and 100 centerpieces for the holidays. They are continuing to work on their SAEs in wintering their beehives. Work-based learning has been to help organize the trips for precision and construction trades to and from the marker space. And finally, the LRTC has been working on updating all of their posters, flyers, and PowerPoints to start giving presentations to Kingswood. They have also been continuing to host My Career, My Future presentations. The latest presentation was featured by Adam Dow from Dow Realty.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Fallon. Terrific report. Okay, we'll move on now to the superintendent's report.
Hey, good evening, everyone. The first thing I have under the superintendent's report is the Wolfboro Trolley Company. Board members, you'll recall, in 2019, you had approved a plan for the trolley company to run a shuttle from Kingswood High School to downtown from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM in July and August. The point of the shuttle is to relieve the traffic congestion in the town. But with the pandemic, Kathy, the owner of the trolley company, decided that this, it wasn't a good time for this to begin. So she is looking toward beginning this this summer. In my view, it would not interfere with our school operation in any way, and it would be a definite benefit to the town and businesses in the town. So I would like the board to consider a motion to agree to allow the trolley company to run the shuttle from Kingswood High School.
Okay, it's been moved by Charlene. Seconded by Stephanie. Any discussion? Kathy, do you have anything you'd like to say about it? Or everything is in place before, just the way it was before, so I don't think there's any-
Kathy couldn't be here tonight. She's actually ill. She had planned on being here, but she- Said if you have any questions, she'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, I'm not, you know, I think everything is in place exactly the way we approved it the last time. Insurances and all that stuff, so I'm certainly in favor of this.
The basketball mask exemption. I put this back on the agenda because we had a cluster of three students on the basketball team. And first, before I discuss that, I do want to address that there's a very nice letter thanking the board for taking the time to review the request and approve it, and also for the support provided to our athletic programs. So at the time when the exemption was approved, the group was very excited, and they really did appreciate the time that the board took to review it and consider. But of course, the situation has changed since then. The nurse was forced to close the team down, and that's after consultation with DHHS. And I asked the team to continue to wear masks until you were able to discuss this tonight. Because I felt that you would either want to reaffirm the decision or you would want to not reaffirm the decision. I checked with the athletic directors, and the teams that we play will agree to be masked when they come here. And also, they have agreed that when we go to their schools, if the board decides to reverse the exemption, that their teams would mask also. So our teams would be playing on a level playing field with the other schools, so.
Okay, discussion. Yes, Jim.
One, two, three. There we go. All right, thank you very much. As I recall this, of course, just to be sure we're on the same page, this was related strictly to the playtime when athletes were actually on court playing. Everything else remained the same. They would be masked when they were on the sidelines, et cetera. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, good. I think the COVID situation has unfortunately forced us to go back on this. My opinion is, I think we should return to requiring the masks all the time, at least for the short term until circumstances dictate otherwise. So I would make a motion to rescind our decision of the last meeting indefinitely. And we can visit in the future.
Okay, so there's a motion to rescind our prior decision and make masks mandatory at all times while playing or on the bench?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Jim Pittman. Any other, is there a second? Second by Dr. Jim. Additional discussion?
I'm wondering, how are the students doing who had COVID? Fallon, you had mentioned that there was good tracking and conversation about how they were feeling?
Yeah, I'm friends with people on the basketball team, and I actually went to my first basketball game the other day for the first time in like two years. And everyone was wearing their masks like they were supposed to. And everyone that did have COVID recovered fine. And I think, I think maybe keeping the masks on for a little bit would, but I honestly really think that if they're wearing their masks on the sidelines, wearing them in the locker room, that hopefully this can go away within like two to three weeks. My problem with putting the masks back on is their season's actually extremely shorter than it usually is. Their season's going to end before February vacation, and I mean, that's not really a very long season for basketball like it usually is. I know health and safety of students and coaches is first, obviously. But I just would like the board to maybe think about that.
Thank you. I'm on the mindset right now that if the teams who are playing are also going to be masked coming here, or if we go there, they'll honor our request to be masked. That makes a lot of sense to me. I think certainly if the situation changes rapidly, we could certainly meet and, you know, again, reverse our decision or allow masks to be removed if necessary. But I think right now it makes sense to require the masks, again, really since the visiting teams or us visiting another school will honor our request, I think it makes a lot of sense to keep the masks on, so.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is that, putting the mask back on, does that mean that all elementary school kids and middle school now has to wear masks, even though they don't have a COVID issue?
They always did, Fallon. That's been, then it's been a policy across the district since the stay-open plan was implemented.
Have there been cases of COVID in the middle school and the elementary school of basketball?
Yes, actually, there are. There are two cases right now the nurses monitor.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't know that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to rescind our vote from December and require masks indefinitely for basketball, whether you're on the court or not. We'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor? Wendy? Stephanie? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes yes as well, so we'll require masks for the time being, whether you're on the court or not for basketball. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item.
Yes, the next item is the Town of New Durham voting. Just to recap, at our last meeting, the board declined the request for voting this coming March during school hours and for September 13th and November 8th for the Town of New Durham. The Town of New Durham has asked to have town voting, and the school's placed on the agenda for this meeting. And I believe there are representatives of the select board and perhaps other towns, people who are here to address that.
Hi, I'm Alicia Housel, interim town clerk for the Town of New Durham. I'm here on behalf of the town and asking for a reconsideration for letting us use the elementary school for town voting. I am new to working for the Town of New Durham, but I've been a part of the community for many years now. The town does not have any other good options for voting due to space needs. The elementary school allows us to have the space needed to keep everyone safe in all aspects, such as mobility, accessibility, and remaining socially distanced during the voting process. We have 1,966 registered voters here in the Town of New Durham. With the state requirements for booths, observation areas, voter registrations, voter check-in, the space requirements just keep increasing on us. Along with these requirements, there has to be a guardrail surrounding the entire voting area. And the inside of the voting area space has guardrails and pathways that must be three feet wide, and by voter booths must be six feet away from each guardrail. When the voting is complete, the voters must be able to walk out of the voting area and exit the voting facility with the same minimum space requirements of three feet spacing for accessibility purposes. Though we do acknowledge that we do have a space needs issue in the Town of New Durham, and a new voting location may possibly need to be found in future years. Unfortunately, we don't have the time. It does not happen overnight for us. Stepping into this position a few weeks ago and finding the letter that we received on December 17th stating that the town was not allowing us to vote March 18th has given us a very hardship of trying to find a voting facility in three months that the community desperately needs. This is why I'm here before you tonight, to request that we are allowed to vote on the March 8th at the school, elementary school. We do understand that it does cause an influx because the Town of New Durham school would have to be closed for that day. And that each election, more and more booths are having to be required. In the September 13th of the 2022 voting election and the November 8th one, increased booth requirements are increased due to higher voter volume turnout. Same with the federals. Federal elections, each time more booths need to be available, therefore, we need more space. Town of New Durham Elementary School Gymnasium is the only space that we have currently that will give us the state regulations for voting space. This is my formally asking the board to also take into consideration allowing us to use the school for future voting for the next year or two until we can get a space need situated, ideally for September 13th, November 8th of 2022, and March 14th of 2023. This request will allow the town some time to address our space needs issue that will not get resolved overnight on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, someone else would like to speak?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Linda Callaway. I am a resident voter, taxpayer, poll worker, and newly-elected town moderator in New Durham. I am here to express my concerns with the school board's December decision to deny the town its use of the elementary school for upcoming election. I would have happily made my case in advance of the vote in December had I known that the school board was voting on an issue so important to the entire community. In November and December of last year, the acting town clerk and I had discussed procedures for upcoming elections, intending to include other town officials for more detailed discussions in the new year. Discussions about location had yet to come up. A year earlier in 2020, when I first heard the school board had planned to block the town's use of the school building for local primary and general state elections, Dot Kinmin, the forward town administrator, said he had been in talks with the school and we would be able to use the gym during those elections. The background information I had received from prior town clerks all indicated that the town had supported the expansion of the school and gym with the promise that the town would have use of the facilities in the future for critical functions such as election. For last year's town election, we moved to the outdoor drive-through voting due to the COVID emergency order. And it was my understanding that the use of the town elementary school would be available for future election. Apparently, that will not be the case. The board intends to block the town's use of the school in this year's upcoming local state primary and general elections. Please understand the mandatory requirements based on the number of registered voters in town dictate space needs. The number of polling booths, ADA-compliant polling booths, areas for poll watchers, poll workers, and voters themselves, safe distancing, which may be an issue, and safe and sufficient parking. It is clear the gymnasium at the elementary school is the only possible indoor space in town, especially in the case of inclement weather and in this March for possible continued health reasons. Although we may have fewer than 1,000 votes cast in local elections, that will not be the case for the general and primary election. For the 2020 general election, there were almost 1,900 votes cast. A review of typical polling locations throughout the state shows that of the 338 designated locations, 133 of them, approximately 39% are located in schools. At least 45 are Witcher Elementary School. Some of those towns are nearby, such as Milton, Rochester, Somersworth, which have scheduled either teachers' workshops or remote learning. I fail to understand how there could be conditions here which pose any greater interruption or danger to our students and families than anywhere else in the state. Although it may be inconvenient for three days this coming year to close the school, there are simple and creative options the school administrators and staff can devise. I believe the school board has just as much an obligation to- I believe the school board has just as much an obligation to support our community as the community does to support our school. It seems ironic that our town is being asked to vote on the school budget, which does not allow our elementary school to be used as a place to vote. In closing, I would like to share one final thought. What does it say about a community that will nominate accommodations for arguably our most critical civic duty, thereby denying our children, our future voters, exposure to this integral part of our democracy? From my perspective, these events should serve as an incredible teaching and learning opportunities by parents and educators to demonstrate the importance of our elections. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I'm back. Um, so I'm gonna, I wanted to let them go first so that they could speak on the specifics of what is required for the booths and the locations. Um, but there was a little bit of information that I wanted to just kind of clear up on what research we have done since being notified on December 17th. So what we're requesting is to utilize the schools again for elections, not just for March 8th, but for future elections, until we have an option available to us in the town of New Durham that is both feasible in our tax bracket for our, for our income, for, for people right now in our, in our community, uh, and also for making it feasible for space. So those are two big areas that are of a concern for our small community. Um, when I state that New Durham School is the only place that we in New Durham believe can currently host elections, it comes from a place where the town clerk and I have just in the last few short weeks asked many questions, completed a lot of research, and have concluded that there is only one location that is still viable for elections, and that's the elementary school. It is important to note that without last year's governor's orders, we cannot hold an election like we did in 2021 at our transfer station. It's also important to note that without a warm, structured, and large enough facility, unlike Malt and Barrow, um, we do not have the ability to hold elections in our fire station. I do have our fire chief here with us today if you'd like to hear a little bit more about why we can't hold them in our fire station, um, because that seems to be something that has been brought up, that why can't we have it there? Um, due to the number of registered voters, which I again believe is around 2,000, which our town clerk just stated, our state requirements, we believe our community room is just too small to meet the demand. Um, right now we would need those 10 booths and along with the other guidance, and there's just no room in this small square footage that we have of our community room to fit the minimum requirements based by the secretary of state. Um, if we were to even find a facility outside of the town that could host our elections, taxpayers would not only need to pay for the space, but would also need to provide costly transportation options that we've not planned or budgeted for. So our budget season starts through, you know, this year. We've already started our budget for this 2022 year into 2023. The election is in March. At this point, there's very minimal wiggle room for us to be able to make adjustments and changes to our budget to accommodate any additional fees or charges that we're going to have for elections. So again, we're in a situation at this time that we do not believe we have another option within New Durham that can be confirmed. This is terrifying as we grow even closer to our March 8th election. We are nearing the deadlines to post where we have our elections and how we're going to notify our taxpayers and our community. And we just do not have the time to come to this solution. In addition, we need to know where the future of our elections are going to be in 2022 and 2023 and beyond, so that we can begin to scramble to adjust our town's budget and to notify our taxpayers of the impact to them personally and financially. So again, I ask you today to please reconsider your previous decision. I can understand that this is a burden the school board has on it, and it can be a challenging one, full of concerns. However, I'd like to address them with compassion and empathy as well as possible solutions, such as letting you know that we would obviously, if it was during a school day, have police presence available like we have in past elections. We would have town employees available like we have had in past elections. We'd also have our staffing requirements stayed by the state that would be available for those elections if you decided to have them while they're in session. We know that that letter that was sent to you provided options in section five that talked about blizzard bags, talked about snow days, remote learning days, and options as well. I understand that that letter came across very strong, and that was the position of the board because they are so concerned that we just do not have the place or location to be able to manage this this year or even in the near future. There has been several conversations on space needs, but we didn't even have a facilities study done until this past year, this past 2021. And the first time the facilities committee met after that study was done wasn't until this summer, this past summer. And we're just now being able to start talking about what to do with public safety buildings. Never mind, do we have a building large enough to have elections? Because the town thought they were okay. The last letter we received until the December 17th letter, and I asked this question in October when I reached out to the school district because I had a write-to-know request from a resident about wanting to know if the school or school board had reached out to the town of New Durham and said that we would not be able to utilize schools. I received one letter, and that was from 2014. I checked emails and looked through emails, no correspondence. I asked a write-to-know request to the school and I have not yet heard back. So at this point, we are asking you if there is any information that we are missing about where we went wrong besides knowing in 2014 that this could potentially be a situation, then we would like to know that, and we are so sorry that we did not respond sooner. But at this point, we are so close to this election, we're just asking you to please reconsider. And I'd like to add to the remote conversation that I believe your superintendent mentioned earlier. We have two select board members that are not in the state and are unable to attend this meeting today. And we did request to the superintendent's office if there was any remote option, whether there's Zoom or virtual, and we were informed that you do not offer that. I highly recommend it. It is something that our select board and many of our other town boards do offer as participation. It really helps the towns that have to travel a little further, those residents that have to travel a little further or might be out of state, so that they can participate in your town and school conversations. It is so vitally important, and our select board understands that it's vitally important that those things happen, and we hope you'll consider those as well. So I would like to conclude with again, we're reaching our hand across the aisle, trying to work with you here and wanting to know how we can come up with solutions. And we're happy to, to talk suggestions or answer questions for you. And again, I brought people with me today, so hopefully we can do that if you have any questions. Thank you for considering this this evening.
Thank you. Anyone on the board first would like to speak or? One of, one of the, one of the concerns that I have, and I know you reached out and you found the 2014 letter, um, which basically stated, you know, for safety reasons, the open carry law and all those things, that we wouldn't be having elections in school, on school, uh, elections in the school buildings on school days. Um, seven years later, uh, we now have a, a facilities study being presented. So seven years have gone by since that 2014 letter. Um, and my, my concern is that this doesn't just affect the voters, it also affects the students within the building. Uh, if, if New Durham is allowed to vote in the building this year, uh, that would be a remote day for your students, uh, which is going to affect your 180, 185 students and their families for that day to be remote where the rest of the students are in their schools, uh, learning on a regular basis. Um, it's our job, obviously, to provide the best education possible. We know that remote isn't an ideal situation. So that's part of our concern as well in forcing these parents to now adjust their day to, to go to another remote. Obviously, snow days and all are, are, you know, stuff we can't control. Uh, this is something we can control, and remote is not the ideal option, obviously, for students to be home rather than in the classroom.
And, and that's one of the burdens that we rec, understand and we consider. So our numbers say 153 students, but even if there's 183, we care about all of them. Um, so we want to make sure that those students have a great education and that they're well cared for and taken care of. We also though, on the other side, on the, on the flip side of that, have over 2,700 residents in the town of New Durham, and we have 2,000 registered voters. 2,000 registered voters who are looking to have their election where they're used to having their election. Um, we look at this as, as a situation where we want to make sure that the residents who have been coming out and have had their polling location know where they're gonna go and vote. They're not just voting for town positions, they're voting for school decisions as well. These are not just the town elections, these are the school elections as well that we're talking about. And we want to make sure that people know where they're gonna go and vote. And knowing so limitedly, so knowing the 17th of December that you are going to make this decision for March 8th, that is the, the, the difficult part that we have. It is such a short window. Now, there was a conversation that at one point, this might have been a topic last year during the time of, of making the calendar.
Correct.
Um, I looked through emails, and again, this is why I write to know, requested the, the school. I did not see anything notifying us that this was gonna be a conversation when it came up to, to elections. So I'm new, I started in May, so everything I do is by research. Everything I do is by looking things up. And when I've had residents come to me and say, oh no, we, we actually have it recorded that a, a resident said, since when are we not able to use the school? I thought the last time we talked to the school that they were perfectly fine with us using the school still. So that opened up a write-to-know request, I think, back in, I want to say September, October. Um, the person who made that, that request is actually here this evening as well. And so I, I followed up and I reached out to the school because I could not find any information from the school board in an official letter or an email from the superintendent's office or the school board stating that we would not be able to utilize the school for elections. Now, you might say that we had access to that, but that is why we asked the school to please provide that information to us so that we'd be well informed. And again, we've searched our, our records. We cannot find anything besides positive communication between the superintendent's office and our town administrators. Reform two before me.
Jack, I can speak a little bit to the history. Nicole, after 2014, um, the board in 2016 made a decision again not to have voting in the schools. The select board, like this, asked the school board to reconsider. And there was a meeting at which the select board attended, and the school board in fact, made a decision to rescind the, to rescind their original decision of no voting in the schools. Now that is all in school board meeting minutes. If you talk with Scott Kidman, you talk to former select board members, they'll be able to fill you in.
Um, I hate to interrupt you, but when you're right to know requested, that, that matters. If I ask you specifically for it, it's not for me to go search for it, it's for you to give me a time frame.
Nicole, you're, uh, there is still time for me to respond to the right to know request by law?
Yeah.
And I will do that. But, uh, what I'm telling you is you can find that information. Uh, following, following that meeting, uh, the, the school board did allow the New Durham School to, uh, town to hold elections. And then in 2020, because of COVID, that we extended to everyone in the district the opportunity to use school buildings for elections. There isn't a town in the school district that we have to tell every single year that there isn't going to be voting in the schools. So, you know, I, I think that this is, this is a two-way street here.
I agree, I agree. And, and I've never been in a situation where I wasn't aware that the school board or school district didn't know when voting days were. And that came up too, you know, so I want to make sure that the voting days are, are well-known and documented and that you have that information, which is why our town clerk brought that information to you today as well, so that you would under, know those days in advance. So if you're not gonna be having those, those in session. But recently, we received information from Michelle Capone asking about absentee ballots, which tells us that, that there are people who are in the school district who know when elections are supposed to take place and when they're gonna happen, and they're reaching out to us to talk about absentee ballots. So that would tell us that the school and the school board knows when elections are gonna take place. And if New Durham is still under the impression of needing to have a place for a school for, for an election, it would just be a spin at that point, and I apologize. I'm assuming, the town of New Durham has been assuming, and that's a shame on our part, but now we're in a situation where we were notified December 17th that we're not gonna be able to utilize the school at all. And that is, that is a scary position for the town of New Durham to be in and the residents of New Durham to be in.
Hey.
Oh.
Um, so I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a voter, uh, and I'm on the school board. I feel like I lie at the intersection of all of this. Um, and coming and speaking from all those identities, I think that the most important thing is for us as a board is to support the free and fair elections in the communities that we serve. Um, if there's a cost to the taxpayers of New Durham associated with having to vote outside of the school, that's going to build animosity and resentment between us and the town. And that's not a good place to be. We vote on our budget, um, as a town, and I think it's important to have really good relations. Our democracy has been under attack, um, across the country. And, and I think that we need to support New Durham in having free and fair elections. And I think that involves allowing New Durham to use the school. I, I know how burdensome remote learning is, but if I know two months in advance that there will be a remote learning day, I can pivot and adjust, and I can make the, the care arrangements that I need to do in order for my children to be cared for. Most parents, I think, feel this way as well. And as you said, Nicole, the number of voters in the town outnumbers the number of parents. And many of those parents are voters and suggested, um, several suggested to me um, to do remote learning, um, particularly for this March election. Now, I think that I also respect the position of the board and that we are looking at the district and the whole calendar, and that's the next agenda item. I believe that we as a board, we have the opportunity in our calendar on an annual basis until New Durham has greater space needs um, through this facilities report that's been conducted in 2021. Until the, the space needs are properly addressed, I think that we as a district can accommodate very easily, uh, voting in the schools by just making very slight adjustments to the calendar in terms of when parent-teacher conferences are and when professional development days occur without adding any additional days to the calendar. Um, Nicole, you had mentioned that the fire chief was here tonight?
Yes, he is.
I would very much like to hear from him because in order to, I think, as you said, reach across the aisle and build bridges between New Durham and the district, what I would like to know is can we as a board get on board with allowing New Durham to use a school during the colder months and the, the elections of March and November in particular? Because there is no other space in town. However, there is a fire station that if emptied of the bays and the community room behind it, that together could provide enough space during warmer months. And I would like to know if that's a possibility during September elections.
Okay, the state requires that our ambulance is stored at 50 degrees. It can't drop below 50 degrees, we can't leave it outside. Um, and the other concern is freezing temperatures, obviously, for the engines and the equipment. Uh, if it's in warm weather, yeah, we could do it, but it, it, the first two elections are unpredictable weather. We, I mean, even if it was a good day, we can't plan on it because if we have a bad day, then the equipment stays in the, inside. Um, and there is a problem with carcinogens because all of our fire gear is stored, our PPE is stored in that area of the fire station. We don't have, it's not separated with air exchange. All of our PFAs that are in our fire gear are in the atmosphere in the fire station. So that is a concern, and that's a concern to all the firefighters too. That, and that's one of the things that the space needs study addressed, is those kind of concerns. So I don't know that exposing the public to those PFAs are a good idea or not, but it, it is something that Space Needs Study did evaluate, and they did make a determination that we have to do something for that, even for the firefighters, so. That's where we are. There's a big, there is a space needs problem. It's a big ticket item. It came in at a very expensive, uh, price of $15 million from the architects, from the engineers, uh, to meet the space needs of the town of New Durham. That's a big bill for the town and, uh, on top of our regular annual expenses, it's gonna be tough for the town to really beat those in any short order. It's gonna take a while.
Charlene?
Yeah, yeah.
My gums, I hate them.
We shut us off.
Oh, okay. Now I have two that work. Um, I, I just want some clarification, if, if I may. Um, you said that the, the state fire marshal requires the equipment? Was it the state fire marshal that?
No, it's the ambulance and it's, it's state EMS requires that the ambulance doesn't drop below 50 degrees. That's because of the IV fluids. We have to use the IV fluids on an individual. And they're below 50 degrees, we can put them in hypothermia.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the fact that you have to keep the ambulances at 50 degrees. Do, do they have, do they have heaters in them?
Only if they're running, I don't have.
Okay, so, so, so if they're running, it's warm.
Yeah.
If the temperature drops inside the vehicle to below 50 degrees.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, there's, isn't there an issue with OSHA? Or are there state regarding the fact that your, your fire department employees are being exposed to carcinogens in, in the building every day?
Yes, yes, there is. And that's one of the things that the space needs study pointed out. Um, it has been something that we've been trying to address.
Okay, so, okay, so how are, how are you addressing that? Have you replaced the HVAC or, or what are you doing to, to get those carcinogens out of the building?
At this point, we are, we're, we're working on that's part of the space needs program. That's part of the whole plan about the, uh, emergency services, which includes fire and police.
Okay, so when you say you're working on it, does that mean that you have actually adopted mitigation protocol or no?
So the, uh, the town spent about $40,000 on a space needs study. Came in and evaluated the whole town and every building. Uh, the fire department and, uh, police department on the top, uh, echelon of replacement because that's the largest need. There was other needs, but they fell below those. And most of that was because of the health issues.
So, so are those?
Our, our next step is to get, get a, an architect in and engineering firm in and, and global what, what we need and what we need to do. This building that we're in now, they, the last space needs study, the one they just did, said the building was not salvageable. It's, it is, it was built in the, oh, I think that was in the early eighties by volunteers. It was a volunteer fire department at the time, a very poorly constructed building. Roof, uh, the roof has a clear span of over 75 feet. It only has a weight of 45 pounds per square foot. And it should be 90 pound, pounds per square foot by today's standard. So it's not a building that they, the town wants to invest a lot of money into at this point. But it'll be a full replacement.
Okay, so, but, but putting, putting the, the study aside, and I know there, I guess there are a couple of, uh, uh, select people here. How much is in the proposed New Durham budget this year to mitigate the carcinogenic environment that your firefighters are placed in and your EMTs?
There isn't, we don't, they used to bring this fire gear home with them and they'd carry it in their cars and the kids would jump all over it. Uh, we've had, we, now we have a policy, we put policies in place to mitigate it. Uh, they have to have, it has to be washed after every fire now. Everybody has two sets of gear. The gear has to be washed to try to limit our exposure to it. Although when it's closed up in a room, it's outgassing all the time. When we're wearing it at a fire, we're outside, we're, we're in air packs. So we are limited at that point to the, uh, the exposure because, uh, you know, we're, we're wearing air packs and we're outside. It's only when it's confined in the space of the fire station, a long period of time that it outgasses and gets in the atmosphere.
Good, Charlene, I think we, I don't think we need to, you know, continue on this because, um, it's kind of off track.
So the community room, the community room in our office space are separate from the apparatus floor. And the apparatus floor is where they would have to utilize that space for voting. And that's where the carcinogens are.
So you, I, just to be clear, you're saying that, that the, the fire building cannot be used for voting because it's full of carcinogens, if I'm understanding you?
It should not be used, yes.
Okay. All right, one of, one of the, one of the options that, um, uh, the superintendent just showed me, which, which is something we can look at. Um, it's possible for March and Sep, and, uh, November, uh, to possibly do professional development days, uh, so the students would not be in the buildings. Uh, that would not be possible for September. September elections, elections would, would have to be held elsewhere. Um, that's just the, just the nature of things. Um, so, but it is possible to, uh, you know, look at professional development days for, uh, November and March if, uh, you know, if that's something that the, the board is willing to look at. Uh, but September is out of the question. We can't, can't do anything with September. Yes? Nope.
Okay, this one's working. Um, you know, one of the things that I like to remind everyone is that our school district is composed of six towns. Plus we have tuition students from Middleton. And I have always been a firm believer in, you know, trying to make sure that all of our students have the same opportunities and treating, you know, all of our students the same regardless of what town they're from. And I think I, I, I think I could support, um, you know, allowing New Durham to use our elementary school in March as long as we make that a remote learning day for everyone and for all the students in the district. And that we open up all the schools in the district for voting that day. Because, you know, to me, that's the only thing that makes sense. It should be all or nothing because we're a six-town district.
Okay, the only, the only reason I'd object to that, uh, Charlene, is that the, the other towns in the district, uh, for the most part have other locations to hold their elections. They're not, they're not asking us to use the school buildings. I, I understand, I understand your point. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, well, okay. Um, yes, if you want to, if you want to speak, would you go up to the mic? Please.
This will be short. Um, my name is Ellen Phillips. I'm a resident of New Durham, a teacher in the Governor Wentworth Regional School District for 24 years. And now a volunteer for two hours a day at New Durham School. A daughter who teaches at New Durham School and three grandchildren who are students at, uh, New Durham School. And so what I wanted to bring up was the fact that our Commissioner of Education, in his wisdom or lack of it, has said that we cannot have remote days for COVID. We can only have remote days for snow days or if parents request them. So my thought is if whatever percentage we needed of parents, of students in New Durham School requested a remote day for the one day that we cannot, uh, have professional development or something, that perhaps that would work for this year. And then we look further. You know, I need to say, um, I, I'm in the school every day for two hours. Thank you for what you've done about COVID. Everyone wears a mask. No one walks into that school without one. The children are socially distanced. They don't even notice they have their masks on. My grandchildren come home and I say, uh, Julian, you can take your mask off now, you're home. He doesn't even realize he has it on. It's just a part of their lives at this point. But in, in the school, when we have had an election during COVID, which we did, we had, um, people wear masks. We had the back door of the gymnasium open so that people who refused to wear masks but had the right to vote could come in one at a time, vote, go back out that back door. The rest of the people who were masked were able to, um, were able to just vote in a regular way. The children were not in school that day. But at other times before COVID, when we had elections and people were concerned about school shootings that had started to take place in the country, we have, uh, a door for each wing of, we have a door for one wing of the building that locks. It doesn't lock the children in. They can get out many ways or they could even get out from inside. And we have gates that lock off the other wing of the building so that anyone who was in that school to vote was not able to go any further. The office was closed, no way to get through to anything but to the gym to vote. And we had a policeman stationed at the front door and we had a policeman stationed at the back door. And I know that our legislature has now voted to allow guns in the schools. But, um, I think that having, that if, if we can't get parents to ask for a remote day, which I think is a possibility, I think we get, it's 80%. Is that what we might need, like we need that when we have a snow day? We had 80% of parents requesting a remote day just in New Durham. I mean, I keep telling my grandchildren that fair is not always equal. And I mean, that is exactly what it is. I'm very happy that the other towns in the school district have found other places to vote. New Durham has not. And we have not been able to raise the money to build another building, which we will have in maybe three years, but not before that. So until that, I really ask the school district that I love, that gave my children a wonderful education, that gave me a wonderful career, to please try to work with the residents of New Durham for the next couple of years so that we can have, uh, voting for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jack, if you wouldn't mind, can someone remind me, Nicole, perhaps you, which day in March are requesting? March 8th? Okay, thank you. Um, I, I would be concerned about a remote day. Uh, right now, as, as, uh, you just heard, the commissioner is trying to limit remote days for emergencies. Uh, and I, I think we've also learned over time that remote learning is, is really not the best form of learning for our students. However, we do have a professional development day scheduled for March 25th. So we could switch March 8th and March 25th. Now we'd have to do that across the whole district. Uh, but that is a way to accommodate for New Durham without, uh, without implementing a remote learning day. Uh, and without being, I think, too, it'd be a little disruptive because parents are planning on the 25th. But it sounds like it would be the least disruptive of all the options. And it would help out New Durham. I make a motion to do that.
Okay. All right.
I make a motion to move the professional development day for this school year in March. Kathy, you said on March what?
From the 25th to the 8th.
From the 25th to the 8th district wide, which would allow use of the school for voting in New Durham and would not interrupt the calendar and would not require a remote day. That's my motion.
Okay, so Stephanie has made that motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, Dr. Jim? Okay. Um, I, I think, uh, we, we can certainly have more discussion about this. I think, um, uh, to me, um, I'm, I'm definitely against a remote day. Uh, I don't think that's the right thing for the students to, to do. Um, even if the parent said, uh, we'll make it work. I, I still think the kids belong in the, in the classroom. Uh, every day they, we can keep them in the classroom. Um, I would, I think I would support this, uh, for this year. Um, the next item is our calendar coming up for next year. So we can have the same, similar discussion next year as we go through the calendar. Uh, but I, I would support that. Uh, any other comments from the board?
Green light. Um, again, being on the board as a member at large, but, uh, certainly have lived in, in Durham my entire life. Have, I think, four generations going through Kingswood, through New Durham, um, paid tax, um, dollars at New Durham. Um, I would say that perplexed, I would say, sitting here as a New Durham taxpayer, that we are confused that we didn't know that this was happening to New Durham. That there are discussions that we didn't know that we didn't, couldn't use the, the town, the, the school for voting. Um, because I've had several conversations with Scott Kimmon. I've sat on this board. I, I vote, I did the voter support, you know, the supervisor of the checklist and, you know, for people in the town to be confused that we didn't have the school available to us is shocking to me. Um, but I, you know, and I think it's important that we do keep the kids in school and, you know, for, and, um, remote not be an option. But, you know, I can say that it's too bad that somewhere the leadership in New Durham dropped the ball, um, that this conversation had to take place as adversarial as it did um, to kind of, kind of make the board of Governor Wentworth look bad in light is, is unfortunate because I can say that the olive branch has been extended multiple times through Scott Kimmon, through last year, to do an exceptional job to support New Durham all of these years. And we pay, yes, we pay extreme amount of tax dollars, but we have an acceptable education through this district. And I find it sad that the New Durham residents think it was an adversarial process, that they're angry, um, because they should really look at maybe the leadership in the town as to why the ball was dropped, not to the Governor Wentworth that is not allowing them to use the school. Maybe look at the town to see what happened. Because I think it was flipped around. And I support the motion because I support the kids in this district, as does this board sitting here before you. So I just want to say, I support the motion. But also look at what really might have happened. It's not this board doing something to you. Something happened at the town level. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, any other comments from the board? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that the week before that is school vacation. So Monday would be a school day and then the kids would be out again on Tuesday. So before you voted, I just wanted to point out there's only one day of the children coming back before the day off.
Bobby, that's true and that does make it not ideal. And I, before, before everyone votes on the motion, I have to apologize to the people that arranged professional development. Both of them happen to be here tonight. And I know this is making it so that you need to rearrange everything that you planned and the speakers that you planned for professional development. So I apologize and I thank you at the same time.
Okay, any other comments on the board? Jim?
Now we get the green light. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm in support of this motion. Uh, I just want to comment, um, it sounds like, uh, this is going to be a stopgap measure, of course. You know, the, let's, uh, let's take care of, uh, this March and potentially in our further discussions, maybe September and November. Um, but, um, also hearing a subtext, uh, through all of this that there's, uh, uh, pretty consistent kicking the can down the road dynamic at work here. So, um, I, I feel like we may, we may keep having this conversation every year. Uh, and hopefully the, the fine folks of New Durham will, will be able to make some progress on, on other options. So I just want to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other comments on the board? Okay, we're going to vote on, on the motion to, uh, move the professional development day to, from the, uh, to the 20, from the 25th to March 8th, uh, to accommodate, uh, a school, a school not being in session on the 8th for election day uh, for this year, um, as, as the calendar will be adjusted to that and professional development will then be held on. and professional development will then be held on the 8th instead. All right? Um, all those in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye. Wendy? Stephanie?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman?
Aye.
Charlene? Dana? And Chair votes aye as well. So, uh, for this year, March will be a non-school day across the district and a professional, professional development day instead. Now, we are going to, our next item on the agenda is the calendar. Um, and again, uh, we will discuss the calendar. Um, last year's calendar was clearly voted on in January, which is when we always vote on our calendar. Um, and the, the schools were in session, um, on all of the election days for that calendar uh, because that's what we voted on. Uh, and with the knowledge that schools would not be used for elections across the district, uh, when the calendar was voted on. So, um, again, I think we, we've got this resolved for this year, for this March. Uh, going forward, we're going to have to see what the, what the board wants to do. Okay? Thank you very much for, uh, your comments and your concerns and, and hopefully we can move forward in a positive direction.
I know this isn't working, but we're going to stay for the next topic, obviously.
Sure.
But I do want to thank you, um, for considering this and understanding as well as that I did not have all of the information. And my apologies that I did not have all of the information. I will continue to do my research and collect it. And we're going to actually be placing it on our website so that everybody has access to seeing the conversations back and forth that we have. So if you do have emails or anything like that that you want to send me or resend me so that I know that I have that conversation, I'm happy to have that so that we can put it all together so that we can move forward from here. Thank you.
Nicole, the, the best place to start is a phone call. So let's, let's have a phone conversation.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, uh, let's.
Mr. Kimmon?
Yes.
Uh, I think we have a fairly robust agenda this evening.
We do.
I'd like to request a five-minute recess.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess. Everybody relax for a few minutes and, uh, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. We're going to get started again? Okay, the next item, uh, the next item on the agenda is the calendar for, uh, 22, 23 school year. Uh, so we can start looking at that. Um, Kathy, you want to start?
Sure. Um, you have the proposed calendar in front of you. Um, this was before, this was put together before, obviously, conversations about the elections. So I'll just go through a little bit about the considerations, how it was put together, and then we can have a discussion about what you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, could I ask a quick question just for clarification?
Sure.
I meant to ask that when we were talking about voting in New Durham. Um, so this is a day that school's not going to be in session? And who is responsible for the expense of setting up for, for the elections? Is that the town of New Durham? And, and in terms of custodial?
Yeah, we, we usually have a custodial person in the building.
Okay.
Uh, but all other expenses are to, are the relationship for the town of New Durham, yes.
Okay, thank you.
For, for example, they might have some tech people that they have come in because they're planning on doing two rooms the way we do it here.
Oh, right, okay.
And so that, that means that, you know, we don't have the equipment for that or the people to run it. So they would have to find those things on their own.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, you know, we weren't going to bear the full brunt of that.
No, we, we generally just have a, uh, you know, a custodial staff or someone, someone representing the district in the building. Yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, um, if you look at this calendar and you start with August and September, uh, the very beginning, we have four professional development days before the beginning of school. One is for new teachers coming in. And then the other three are for staff that have been here. Uh, going through, uh, some of the points that we always try to consider and we always try to start after Labor Day for the business community. So it does achieve that in terms of the first day of school. Uh, we moved parent conferences, if you look down to November. We moved to them a little bit earlier this year. You know, we've always wrestled with, do we have that whole week of Thanksgiving off? Because some families do like that because they travel. On the other hand, that's pretty late to be having a parent conference. So we moved the parent conferences up. Um, we were able to preserve the day before Thanksgiving, however, for those people that want to travel. Uh, our Christmas break is at the traditional time. The same with April, uh, and with March, or actually February into March. Um, we end on June 16th. If we don't go over the number of days we have in reserve for remote days. And then we have, of course, what, what we put in is what we have this year, four remote days and one traditional snow day. Um, and the calendar was reviewed by the administrative team and by the union representation and everyone was, was more than satisfied with it. So that's what you have before you. Now, I know you might want to have some discussion considering what we have just heard from New Durham about their dilemma with elections and voting.
On this calendar, is the November election the first or the 8th? Do we know?
I believe, I believe it's on the 8th.
November 8th? Okay, thank you. So if we, so we had a professional development day on the 8th and then we have parent-teacher conferences on the 9th and 10th and then the kids are off on the 11th. So.
Well, what, what we could do is.
So if we move the, kind of just move the, the day that's designated for parent-teacher conferences on the 10th to the 8th?
That's, I was going to suggest that, that we move the, the 10th to the 8th. Uh, but of course, that means that we would have parents in the building, teachers in the building during the elections. But we could do that.
Well, I, you know, we, we kind of voted in, in past years that we weren't going to allow any staff other than a custodial person in the building during elections.
It's, um, it's not an, it's not ideal because you've got kids coming in and out over the week and we try to group days together so the kids can have blocks of time in school and blocks of time out. So a, again, that's the downside to doing that. It helps New Durham. Uh, it's, it's not ideal for kids, though.
Do, uh, let me ask you a question, though. In parent-teachers conferences, do children never come with their parents and are never in the building at any time at an elementary level?
I can't say never. Sometimes they do accompany their parents.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's, that's another concern, too. I think, um, you know, we're trying to keep the building safe. Um, and, you know, we, we could have parent-teachers conferences if we could have them elsewhere, uh, in the towns that had to use the school building. I'm just not comfortable with having, um, teaching staff and, uh, and parents in and out of the buildings. Um, if we're not going to have students there. I mean, the, the idea is to keep the buildings completely segregated strictly for elections.
So I did talk to Kelly and asked if part of the building could be, um, secured? And she said that it could be, that part of the building could be locked off?
It's not, not locked off, Stephanie. There would still, there would still be the possibility of, of access. I mean, it's in a, it is in a separate space, but I don't know how we would lock it off.
I, I mean, as a, in terms of parent-teacher conferences, it's up to parents whether or not they want to bring their children. Um, I usually don't personally, um, but some parents do. Uh, that, that would be at the discretion of parents, it always is. Um, in terms of having, um, adults in the building, you know, parents in the building at the same time as voters, it's a bit of an ironic concern because parents are voters and it would actually probably have the effect of increasing voter turnout, which is always a good thing. The other day in March, uh, the other election day in March is the 14th and there is a professional development day scheduled for the 24th. We could move that professional development day from the 24th to the 14th of March?
I, I think that's less problematic than the other day, than the November day.
I have a, I have a question. Um, I think what, if I'm understanding correctly, what we heard from representatives, uh, from New Durham tonight, they're going to be wanting us to do this for at least the next three years because my understanding is that they don't think they're going to have a facility. So, you know, I'm just saying that this is something that we're going to be looking at if, if we're going to continue doing this, making this exception. This is something we're going to be doing for the next three years, at least.
With all due respect, Charlene, making an exception so that a town can vote is not a burden, but it's a privilege.
Okay, well, let's, let's not get into, let's not.
And I just, I also want to say, Stephanie, that you have made a very compelling argument. And, um, as a school board member, my feeling is that my first priority is to make sure all of our students are safe.
Okay, let's, uh, let's stop that back and forth, please. I, I think, um, looking, looking down the road, um, we, we decided, um, a long time ago that we wouldn't have, um, have school in session, or we would have school in session, and we wouldn't make the buildings available, partially again for the reason that, you know, our, our school calendar goes way into June, and, you know, if we can shorten it up a little bit, that's, that's certainly a better option. If we can move days around where it doesn't extend the school year, I'm all in favor of that, but I, you know, again, I think we, we have to really decide, again, I think Charlene's right, this is not a, a one-year decision, this is something we're going to visit for, for the next several years, I believe. I, I know how long it took Tufton Borough to get a, a new police station approved, I knew how, know how long it took for the library to be approved, it's not something that, even if the town puts it out there, it doesn't mean it's going to be passed the first year out, so this could be an ongoing process for several years, and I think we just have to face that and, and, you know, see if we can accommodate with our calendar New Durham's needs and other needs. I'm not sure, living in Tufton Borough, if we have a, when we have the presidential election in 2024, I'm not sure if they're not going to ask to use the gym for these, at the school as well, just because of the issue of number of people that show up. The town hall that we use in Tufton Borough accommodates normal elections just fine, presidential elections sometimes can be a challenge, so this is something that we have to face going down the road as we do these calendars, and if we can accommodate all of the towns across the district regardless of their concerns and their, their space needs by modifying some of these dates, I think that makes a lot of sense. So.
Thank you, Jack.
What's your, what's your thought on November?
Well.
11th is a day off because, I mean, that's Veterans Day, so that's a required day off.
Right, so you can't do anything with that.
Actually, I did call, I did call the Department of Education today, and Veterans Day is not a required day off, according to the, the person that is in charge of school calendars at the Department of Ed, however, I think it's an unpopular position to request to have students go to school on Veterans Day.
Stephanie, I do agree that it would be a, something that our families would not probably.
Yeah, and that's why I'm not suggesting it.
And, and just, just the significance behind Veterans Day and having school on a day with that kind of significance, I think would not be a good idea.
Yeah, I, I agree. May I, in terms of the September 13th day?
Yeah.
That could be a moving target, depending on what's going on with the decision at the state level as to whether or not that will be the primary day, and so I think it would be more responsible for the district, for the students in the district, to request that New Durham use possibly the warm weather opportunity to explore alternative space for that day. And, and to make a motion to accept the calendar with modifications, to move the teacher conferences from the 10th through the 8th, and the professional development date from the 24th to the 14th. So I make a motion to approve the calendar as amended with those two dates.
And you're not going to make any changes in the September date for now, because that can be problematic, we can't do professional development that early in the school year.
Correct.
So, okay.
Dana seconded, but he doesn't have a mic.
If we're about to vote on the calendar, there is another amendment I would like to propose.
Okay, let's do all the, let's do all the changes first before we try to, try to vote on this and get, get your input first. So what, Charlene, what are you looking at?
If there are no objections from other board members, I would like to propose that on October the 10th, a no-school day, that we strike the words Columbus Day and leave that designation as Indigenous Peoples' Day. My reading of RSA does not seem to indicate that we're required to call it Columbus Day, and I think the fact that, you know, in the last five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years, there's been enough scholastic study and research to show that Mr. Columbus was a genocidal rapist, and I would like us to not glorify him by having his name on our calendar, if there is no objection.
Okay, so, so three changes right now that are being suggested is moving the parent-teacher conference from the 10th to the 8th, which would be a no-school day on the 8th then, for voting in November, moving the professional development day from the 24th to the 14th in March of 2023, and striking the name Columbus Day from the calendar listed on October 10th. Those are the three changes that I.
Should, this is a change, should we just consider one motion at a time?
Yeah, well, this is, it'll be one motion period, we're, we're going to combine, so.
Well, the chances are that will be defeated. There are some who are willing to make the calendar switch, but then there may be some who are not willing.
Okay, all right, good, all right, good, good, good point, well, let's vote on the dates first.
Yeah.
And then we will vote on the striking the name if that's the appropriate, appropriate motion, so. Okay, there's a motion on the floor right now from Stephanie, seconded by Dana.
Yeah.
For the cal, let me see where my calendar is, here we go, okay. All right, Stephanie made the motion, Dana seconded. Okay, so, so we're going to vote on the calendar with the changes from the parent-teacher conference on the 10th of November, moving that to the 8th, and the 8th will be a no-school day, so New Durham and any other town that wants to use their school buildings will be able to use their school buildings, and the moving of the professional development day from the 24th of March to the 14th of March. Okay, that's the motion that's on the floor right now, any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of adopting that part of the calendar signaled by saying aye? Wendy? Stephanie? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana?
Hi.
And chair votes aye as well, so the, we'll move those dates. All right, now, the, the, do I hear a motion to strike the name Columbus from the October 10th listing on the calendar?
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Charlene to strike Columbus, the name Columbus Day. Okay, it's been moved by Charlene, seconded by Dr. Jim. Uh, Jim Pittman, I'm sorry. Okay, any other discussion on that?
I guess the only thing I'll say is that some Italian-Americans really like Columbus Day, being named as it is, I like the fact that we actually have it in the flashy form, but I prefer Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay. All right, so any other comments on that before we vote to either strike or leave Columbus name on the calendar? Okay, the motion is to strike the name Columbus Day from our calendar and call it Indigenous Peoples' Day instead, all those in favor? Wendy? Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
No.
And chair is going to vote aye on that, so we have eight to one on, seven to one, on striking Columbus Day, the name Columbus Day from it. Okay, we are finished with the calendar, I believe. So, let's, let's move on then to the COVID update. Actually, and, and we're going to go, we're going to actually go back, or should I do the flip?
To you, Jack.
Yeah, well, let's do the budget, that's going to take a lot longer than the, the COVID update and all that, so we're going to start the budget presentation if we can. We're going to wait just a second for Linda to go up into the booth, she's going to be the photograph expert. Thank you for coming, I appreciate your comments and your concerns. Okay, it looks like we're ready to go, so we'll start the budget presentation. Okay, I'd like to start with an overview of the ESER funds, also known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. They are COVID-related emergency funds from the federal government to help reopen and keep schools open across the nation. The funds must be used for activities and projects that are related to COVID and acceptable under the grant guidelines. These grants and the specific grant activities were discussed extensively at the June 7th, 2021 school board meeting and at our last presentation of the proposed budget. Priorities were established for use of these funds. In order here are the priorities we set. First, student safety and well-being, next, addressing learning loss and improving school achievement, and third is looking at enhancing our HVA system for students' health and safety needs as an investment in our schools that will help defray costs down the road. The funds are available in three phases. ESER I, or the Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act, was first, was the first phase of the funding. These funds were to purchase personal protective equipment, plexiglass, Chromebooks, software for remote instruction and meetings, cleaning supplies, tuition for remote learning programs, and nursing services. The total amount of the grant was $539,307.27. All of the money is allocated with the exception of approximately $40,000, which, which will be allocated for projects related to improving student achievement. ESER II, or the Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, CRRSA, funds have been devoted to increasing the academic achievement of our students. The administrators have been working to do this. Katie, our curriculum director, explained, explained this at our last meeting. These funds and resources available through this grant will help the schools achieve this in a much, in a shorter period of time, what may have taken years to achieve. Included in this grant is work under the umbrella of the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, including consultation and professional development for teachers. As a part of this, we have a two-year math position in each of the schools and a curriculum project manager at the high school, a social and emotional learning resource, additional reading materials, funds for more extensive summer programming, and an after-school tutoring and transportation fund. All of these expenses are calculated for a two-year period, and the total of this grant was $2,928,158.41. $423,113 remains unallocated, and will be, will be available for additional services to students. ESER III, or the American Rescue Plan, ARP, is the third phase and the largest amount of money. This is where the third priority of the school board comes into play. The ESER III grant is the largest amount of grant money at $6,582,666, and must be expended by the end of 2024. The grant guidance, the grant guidance expressly identifies heating, ventilation, and cooling systems as a supported activity. Consideration of the, of the money being put into the buildings will save us costs of incurring additional costs down the road to upgrade these systems. To provide public input for the use of these funds, we've had on the website a, an email, if you go to the ESER grants, you can email for public input. It is important for the public to know that the grants cannot be used to lower the tax rate. The federal government requires that in order to receive these funds, we are not disproportionately reducing state and local per pupil costs in schools, and the district is not disproportionately reducing the number of full-time staff per pupil in high, in high-need classified schools. These grants are more complex than your typical grants and have a variety of requirements imposed by the federal government, including formulas to ensure we are following the guidelines. There is some flexibility during the grant period to modify the grant activities, for example, if an activity results in some leftover funds, those can be reallocated. However, any unspent funds must be returned to the federal government. Now, moving on to the budget. The budget preparation begins in October with staff members in each school providing the student, the school principal with their budgetary needs. Each administrator submits a budget to the SAU office. The business administrator and superintendent of schools meet with each school leader to discuss the requests. If there is a large increase in an individual budget, unless there is a special circumstance or a very well-justified rationale, the administrator is asked to review the budget and reduce it while keeping priorities intact. If any increase remains that does not have a strong justification, a second, second cut may occur. Personnel requests are made at the same time. Requests for positions may or may not proceed to the finance committee depending on the strength of the rationale outlined, outlining the need for the position. This year, we, we discussed reductions in positions rather than additions. Public meetings in November to discuss the budget this year were held on November 17th, 16th, 17th, and 18th. Following these meetings, additional cuts were made in order to lower the budget further. After tonight, there will be two more opportunities to hear about the budget. At the January 10th board meeting, that's today when the budget is, I'm sorry, this is the January 10th board meeting, there'll be one additional at the deliberative session on February 5th at 10:00 AM here in this auditorium. Although total enrollment is, for the most part, stable, there are some changes in enrollment at some of the schools. Last year's total enrollment was 2,112, this year's is 2,107. High school enrollment is lower than it was last year, however, the incoming classes over the next two, two years will likely bring that number back up. Osiphe increased by 19 students, and New Durham also increased by 19 students. The largest decrease was in Crescent Lake with 36 fewer students, and we saw a decrease last year in kindergarten enrollment at Carpenter. We expected to see an increase this year, but did not. This was factored into some staffing decisions, which we, we will be discussing. It is unclear if we will see higher enrollment numbers once we are no longer in the middle of a pandemic. Schools are labor-intensive organizations, and wages make up approximately 75% of the budget. The increases in wages in this budget is less than a half a percent. This includes two new para-educator positions required by the individual education plans for students with disabilities. It also includes a 30% special education teaching position in Effingham in order to meet the needs of the special education students. Even with these additions, the increase is small because we are eliminating two teaching positions in the schools that have had a drop in student numbers. Class sizes will still be well below the state recommendation in both schools. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I can back up, I'll go back up. Nope, we'll wait for the signal to be, have the sound fixed. Sure, absolutely. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. Okay. Okay, thank you. Not sure exactly where we ended, but I'm going to go back to the last, very, very last section on the ESER funds. The ESER III grant, I think, I'll start there, was the largest amount of grant money at $6,582,666, and must be expended by the end of 2024. The grant guidance expressly identifies heating, ventilation, and cooling systems as a supported activity. Consideration of the putting of the money into our buildings will save us the cost of incurring additional costs down the road to upgrade these systems. To provide public input on the use of these funds, go to the GWRSD website, where you will find the ESER Grants, and you can send emails for public input. It is important for the public to know that the grants cannot be used to lower tax rates. The federal government requires that in order to receive these funds, we are not disproportionately reducing state and local per pupil costs in schools, and that the district is not disproportionately reducing the number of full-time staff per pupil in high-need classified schools. These grants are more complex than our typical grants and have a variety of requirements imposed by the federal government, including formulas to ensure we are following the guidelines. There is some flexibility during the grant period to modify the grant activities. For example, if an activity results in some leftover funds, those can be reallocated. However, any unspent funds must be returned to the federal government. Moving on to the budget. Budgeting preparation begins in October with staff members in each school providing the school principal with their budgetary needs. Each administrator submits a budget to the SAU office. The business administrator and the superintendent of schools meets with each school leader to discuss the requests. If there is a large increase in an individual budget, unless there is a special circumstance or a very well justified rationale, the administrator is asked to review the budget and reduce it while keeping priorities intact. If any increase remains that does not have a strong justification, a second cut may occur. Personnel requests are made at the same time. Requests for positions may or may not proceed to the finance committee depending on the strength of the rationale outlining the need for the position. This year, we discussed reductions in positions rather than additions. Public meetings in November to discuss the budget this year were held on November 16th, 17th, and 18th. Following these meetings, additional cuts were made in order to lower the budget further. After tonight, there will be an additional time to discuss, to listen to the adopted budget at the deliberative session on February 5 at 10:00 a.m. Although total enrollment, for the most part, is stable, there are some changes in enrollment at some of the schools. Last year's total enrollment was 2,112. This year's is 2,107. The high school enrollment is lower than it was last year. However, the incoming classes over the next two years will likely bring that number back up. Osiphe increased by 19 students, and New Durham also increased by 19 students. The largest decrease was at Crescent Lake with 36 fewer students, and we saw a decrease last year in kindergarten enrollment at Carpenter. We expected to see an increase this year but did not. This was factored into some staffing decisions, which we will be discussing. It is unclear if we will see higher enrollment numbers once we are no longer in the middle of a pandemic. Schools are labor-intensive organizations, and wages make up approximately 75% of the budget. The increase in wages in this budget is less than half a percent. This includes two new paraeducator positions required by the individual education plans for students with disabilities. It also includes a 30% special education teaching position in Effingham in order to meet the needs of the special education students. Even with these additions, the increase is small because we are eliminating two teaching positions in the schools that have had a drop in student numbers. Class sizes will still be well below the state recommended in both schools. Positions will be reduced through attrition as we have two retirements. The wage line does not include the Governor Wentworth Support Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement or the Governor Wentworth Administrator's Collective Bargaining Agreement. These will be presented in warrant articles and are addressed later in this presentation. The largest increases are increases that we have no control over. Health insurance is the largest increase at $656,226, or 7.25%, and $210,000 for the retirement system, or 4.56%. The decreases you see in these lines are the result of our administrators scouring through each school's expenses to cut back where they could. Items related to building and maintenance were also reviewed and cut back to offset the repairs and maintenance list that needs to be attended to this year in addition to the capital improvement list. The work that our IT department did to run cable, bringing in voice-over IP, is paying off in a significant reduction in our phone service bills. Here is the second half of the general supplies budget. We continue to see cuts in supplies, gas, heating oil, transportation fuel, books, and media, new equipment, and new furniture in order to balance out the increases in some of the other areas. The increase in testing material is a result of changing to XPATH testing. XPATH allows the teachers to drill down to see which standards, I'm sorry, are being met and provide suggestions and resources for providing the students with additional help to meet the standards. The tuition line represents about 2/3 of the increase in the general fund. This line is for special education students who, for various reasons, are placed out of district. They may be foster children placed in a home in another district, children who, when they moved into the district, were already in placement, or students we have needed to place. This figure is the projection for students who are either already in placement or placement is being discussed. If the placements don't occur, this money is returned to the taxpayers. The increase in the replacement of equipment line keeps our Chromebook replacement cycle on target. It also includes some teacher laptop replacements, as well as replacements for some of our smart boards. We have been moving to Promethean boards, which are less expensive than the smart boards and do not require additional document cameras and projectors. The increase in the replacement furniture is for tables at the high school and chairs at Osiphe. Both have not been replaced for about 20 years. This past year and a half has been a particularly trying time for everyone. This is the Support Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement. Our support staff has been doing an incredible job. We are very short-staffed. We have approximately 30 positions unfilled. There are plenty of jobs available for people right now paying more than we are paying our support staff. This is one of the main reasons it is so difficult to fill these positions. The unemployment rate in New Hampshire is so low that the state is considered to have full employment. The Consumer Price Index has increased, and for New Hampshire, it is approximately 6.2%. We appreciate the hard work of our support staff and need to make compensation more competitive with the surrounding area. We also have the goal of increasing the amount the support staff pays for insurance. In order to give our support staff a reasonable raise and increase their portion of insurance without having them go, end up in the negative, we discussed a three-year agreement. Year one with a 5% wage increase and an insurance co-pay of 4%. Year two, a 4.5% increase with an insurance co-pay of 4.5%. And year three, an additional 4.5% wage increase with a 5% insurance co-pay. The collective bargaining for the administrative team is also here. This is also the year for the collective bargaining for the administrative team, and our principals have been doing a terrific job during this challenging time. We have a seasoned, competent, and very caring administrative team, all of whom have been with us long-term. Most started out in teaching or other positions within the district. Negotiations had two goals from the school board's point of view, to keep salaries competitive with other schools in the state because we want to retain our administrators and to increase the insurance co-pay for the administrators. We have done that with this agreement. Year one is a 3% wage increase and an increase from 3% to 4% for insurance co-pay. Year two is also a 3% increase and an increase to a 4.5% co-pay for insurance. And year three is a 3% increase with an increase of 5% insurance co-pay. As new administrators come into the district, they will have a 10% insurance co-pay. Special warrant articles will be on this year. Each year, the board puts forth a building and maintenance warrant article for capital improvements. It is varied between $150,000 and $200,000. The years when it has been $150,000, we invariably have projects that are not completed and need to be considered the following year. This is the case this year. This warrant article includes the funds for three compressor replacements at the high school, middle school, and the technology center, carpeting replacement in Osiphe in several classrooms, window replacement at Carpenter School, and sidewalk replacement at Osiphe in Effingham. Our quotes and estimates for all of the capital improvements' needs come to $243,455. Also each year, for the past several years, we have presented a turf field capital reserve warrant article. Capital reserve was established to avoid the district having to pay full expense of replacing the turf field all at once. The life expectancy of the turf field is 10 to 12 years at a cost of approximately $750,000 to replace. Currently, we have approximately $650,000 in reserve. When this fiscal year is at an end, we hope to add the $60,000 from this year's warrant article to bring the total to approximately $710,000. We have been able to extend the life of the turf to 15 years through meticulous care. With the continued support of the warrant article, we should have the full cost of replacement in 2024 when it will be needed. Over the past several years, we have retired our bonds in Osiphe, Effingham, and New Durham. Our principal or debt from the Kingswood Complex project continues to decrease. This coming year's reduction is $92,236. The interest increases as our principal decreases because we receive less state aid with the reduction in our principal. The total reduction in the debt service is $6,495, or 0.18%. This chart shows the potential tax impact of the budget. We were fortunate this year that the state revised its formula for providing adequacy money. We did not see the decrease that we would have seen in state aid with our lower enrollment without the revised formula. This helps the tax rate in some of our communities. We have been informed that this formula will be in effect for one year only. The difference between the 2021-2022 tax rate and the 2022-2023 projected tax rate per thousand is the following. Brookfield increases by $1.82. Effingham increases by $1.30. New Durham increases by $0.11. Osiphe increases by $0.87. Duffstenboro decreases by $0.17, and Wolfboro decreases by $0.31. RSA 40,13, the Official Ballot of Law, also known as SB 2, determines what is to be included as part of a default budget. A default budget is the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized the previous year, reduced or increased by obligations mandated by law or previously incurred, such as debt service and contracts. One-time expenditures are not included in the default budget. The purpose of presenting a default budget is to give the voters an understanding of what a budget would look like should the proposed operating budget be voted down. The default budget is $433,642 lower than the proposed budget. Aside from employee expenses, the largest increase in the budget is in the tuition line for special education, $420,000. These dollars are budgeted for placements under discussion for current students who may need them. We are ethically and legally required to provide these placements if needed. Our special education budget has always been very reasonable and well-managed, and our special education population is deserving of the services they require. If these placements end up not being needed, this money will be returned to the taxpayers. However, it would be irresponsible not to include this in the budget, knowing these placements could occur. The difference between the proposed budget and the default budget is only $13,642 more than the money included for potential special education placements. I point this out to illustrate the care that was taken in bringing a very responsible and reasonable budget to the taxpayers. Important dates to remember. January 11, tomorrow, the last day for collective bargaining. Also tomorrow is the last day for petition warrant articles. January 31 is the last day to post the warrant, budget, and default budget. January 19 to the 28 is the dates for filing for district officers. February 5 is a deliberative session at 10:00 a.m. in this room. And March 8, 2022, is voting in each one of the towns. The three school board members that are up for election this year, Jim Pittman is up for reelection at Effingham. Who's the other one? Dana, I'm sorry. Dana Streeter in Osiphe is up for reelection, and there's an open at-large seat. Unfortunately, with the passing of Krista Abear, there's an opening for an at-large seat as well to sign up for. Again, thank you very much. If you have any questions about the budget, I am always available to answer. And at that point, we will move on to, unless there's questions right now from the audience? We have three, actually, two motions and some assignments we need to do right now. If there's no questions on the budget, I would like a motion to adopt the budget as presented. All right. Move, all right. Moved by Dr. Jim, seconded by Dana. How does that sound? All right. Wendy? Stephanie? Did she say yes? Oh, yes, okay. Thank you, Stephanie. I didn't realize you had left. That's okay. So anyway, you're voting to adopt the budget. Thank you. All right. Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes aye as well. Okay, the warrant articles. I do have those somewhere, don't I? Yes, I do. There we go. I'm going to read through the warrant articles real quickly. The, the first session of the annual meeting, again, the deliberative session obviously will be February 5th, 10:00 a.m. at the Art Center here. The second session is, is the voting in March, on March 8th. And if you, if you look at the different towns, Brookfield's voting times are 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Effingham is 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. New Durham, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Osiphee is 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tufton Borough and Wolfboro are both 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We also have, the school district moderator is also up for reelection to a one-year term. And I'm going to read the three, the several articles that, that we have on the thing, and then we'll, we'll vote to approve the warrant as presented. Article two, to see if the Governor Wentworth Regional School District will vote to approve the costs included, items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board and the Governor Wentworth Support, Support Staff Association, which calls for the following increases in salary and benefits at the current staffing levels. Fiscal year 2023 estimated increase $193,860. 2024 fiscal year increase of $197,917. And fiscal year 2025 increase of $207,381. And no further, and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $193,860 for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Such sums representing the additional costs attributed to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that were paid at current staffing levels, and the school board recommends this appropriation. Article three, shall the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, if Article two is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article two cost items only. And again, if the article is defeated, that's a vote for us to have a special meeting to reconsider those, that contract. Article four, to see if the Governor Wentworth Regional School District will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board and the Governor Wentworth Administrative Team, which calls for the following increases in salary and benefits at the current staffing levels. Fiscal year 2023, $47,664. Fiscal year 2024, $53,660. And fiscal year 2025, $53,907. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of $47,664 for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Such sums representing additional costs attributed to the increases in salaries and benefits and required by the new agreement over those that were paid at current staffing levels, and the school board recommends that appropriation. Article five is the same as article three, shall the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, Article four is defeated, authorize the governing, governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article four cost items only. Article six, to see if the Governor Wentworth Regional School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be added to the Turf Field Capital Reserve Fund previously established, and furthermore, to name the school board as agents to expend. This sum to come from June 30th, 2022 fund balance available for transfer on July 1st, 2022. No amount to be raised from taxation. The school board recommends this appropriation. Article seven, shall the Governor Wentworth, I'm sorry. Yeah, if there, if we don't have $60,000 left over at the end of the year, we can't put it into the reserve. This is not new tax money, it's just, you know, money left over at the end of the school year.
Thank you.
Yep. Shall the Governor Wentworth Regional School District raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 for repairs and improvements of buildings, grounds at the Kingswood Regional High School, Kingswood Regional Middle School, Lakes Region Technology Center, Kingswood Art Center, Carpenter School, Crescent Lake School, Effingham Elementary School, New Durham School, Osiphee Central School, Tufton Borough Central School, and the SEU 49 Transportation Facility. The school board recommends this appropriation. And Article eight, shall the Governor Wentworth Regional School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations for special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by voters at the first session for the purpose set, set forth therein totaling Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $57,328,983, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, all by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40,13, paragraphs 10 and 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. And this article does not include appropriations requested in any other warrant articles. The school board recommends this appropriation. And the last article is to transaction any other business that may legally become, come before this meeting. So, any questions on those warrant articles first? We need to adopt the, the warrant so we can post it, and then we'll discuss who's going to speak to which articles. Okay, it's been moved to adopt by Jim Pittman. Well, here, a second. Second by Dr. Jim. Okay, this is to move the warrant, warrant articles as presented. Any questions? Oh, sure. Okay, got it. We're gonna, we're gonna insert a comma next to, next to the word Tufton Borough in the very first section of the warrant. Okay, any other changes? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the warrant articles as presented with that one change, signal by saying aye. Wendy? Stephanie?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to pick the articles that everyone would like to speak to. Just because I want to start the ball rolling, I'll do Article number eight, the budget. That's Wendy? That's all right. Let me, let me get your support staff. Wendy, okay? How about the administrators? Anybody want to do the administrators? Okay, Charlene, administrators? Nope. Turf Field, Jim, okay. Jim P. Turf Field. And the $200,000. I think, I think Tim would probably ask to do that if he was here. So let's put, let's put Tim down, and we'll ask him to make sure he wants to do that. Because Tim, Tim usually likes to do the maintenance. Okay, let me, let me go over. Can, can you hear me in the room back, back there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We couldn't hear Charlene when she spoke last time. I think maybe her microphone wasn't working again.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just repeat exactly what we just did for everybody. This is the people who are going to speak to the warrant articles as we present them, and I'll go through each one of them. Article two, which is the support staff, will be Wendy speaking on that. Charlene will speak to the administrators, new contract in Article four. Jim Pittman will speak to the turf field proposal, proposal on Article six. And we're thinking Tim Eldridge will probably do Article seven, because he usually likes to do the maintenance warrant, warrant article. And I will speak to Article eight on the budget.
Jack, will Wendy also speak on Article three? That's, that's closely related to Article two? And Charlene speak on Article five, which is related to Article four?
Yeah, good, good point. Those are the, those are the, if they, if they're defeated?
Yeah.
So yes, thank you. So Wendy will be doing two and three, and Charlene will be doing four and five. Okay, we don't, we don't need any motions on that. That's just, or our information, and we'll contact Tim and make sure that he's comfortable doing, doing the article on the $200,000 maintenance request. Okay, moving on from the school budget, let's go to the COVID update next. It's coming.
Testing.
Yeah.
Got it, great, thank you. Okay, so what I generally do for the COVID update is to just give you an idea of what we're seeing for cases in the school. We're, we're seeing an increase in cases just like everywhere else. In November, we had 184 cases. And then, as of December 31st, we had 119. So far, in January, we have had 127, so we really seem to be fast on the increase. Although, I think as someone else here said tonight, it's expected over the next four to six weeks that the cases are going to continue to rise, and then we'll have a sharp drop-off. I certainly hope that's the case. There has been so much that's been unpredictable with this, but I would love to think that that's what's going to happen, that we're going to have a sharp drop-off in February, but we shall see. The, and moving on to the DHHS guidelines, the, the woman that spoke tonight, I, she's very right about the number of students that we have had quarantining. We have had several students who've had to do more than one quarantine period. So it certainly does, it's not helpful to students' education when they have to be out for such a long period of time. The Department of Health and Human Services, we, we did not expect the CDC guidelines to come out. Those were a total surprise to everyone that I know. And after the CDC guidelines came out, DHHS did not immediately jump on the guidelines and say, yes, we think there's sound science behind this, and, and we're going to follow right along with CDC. It took a little while before DHHS came out with their guidelines. And so, this is, I have something from DHHS dated January 6th, but it came out very late on January 6th, so I didn't see it until January 7th. And of course, here we are, January 10th, to talk about it. So, the, the most significant thing that the new DHH guidelines do is decreases the isolation and quarantine time periods. So when people have tested positive for COVID, or they're sick with symptoms and, and awaiting testing, they, you know, after they're, let's see, let me, let me just be a little clear about this. Or, or people are sick with symptoms, and then they either test positive or their symptoms are, I'm not, let me back up a little. When people have tested positive for COVID, they can return after five days if they've been COVID positive or have had symptoms while awaiting for testing. If a return, if a return at five, if they return at five days, they must wear a mask for an additional five days at home or in public. For quarantine, it's a very similar thing. They need to quarantine for five days and wear a mask for an additional five days. For household contacts that are up to date with vaccines, that means including the booster, they don't need to quarantine. However, a mask should be worn for 10 days. A household contact who has tested positive for COVID within the past 90 days also does not have to quarantine. So, for purposes of the school, everyone is treated as if unvaccinated unless families voluntarily provide the school with their vaccination status, in which case, fully vaccinated individuals do not need to quarantine. So, the DHHS guidelines are much lengthier than that, and they include definitions, you, you have them, I know. And so I, I know you've read them, and they include the definition of isolation, the definition of quarantine, and a lot more specifics. The bottom line is that the five-day quarantine, the 10-day quarantine period is reduced to five days. And that's, nurses have been getting calls since this came out, since Thursday. So Thursday, Friday, and today, they've received a lot of calls because people are very anxious to have the five-day quarantine period or isolation period rather than the 10 so that they can get their kids back in school. I also think that it will help us with our staffing. So I would recommend that we follow the DHHS guidelines as written, and that this be inserted into the stay-open plan, replacing the current quarantine and isolation guidelines.
Okay, it's been moved by Jim Pittman. Seconded by Stephanie?
Oh, no, that was Wendy. Wendy.
Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry. Okay, discussion. Okay, hearing done, let's, let's take a vote. This is to adopt the current DHHS quarantine guidelines, stay, and stay-open plan, and insert this in the stay-open plan, place of the existing quarantine section. All those in favor? Wendy? Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well.
Okay, great. Well, that is the end of my report.
And I, I don't really have much for School Board Association. I do have a meeting Wednesday morning as my, part of my responsibility on the NHIAA Council. I have a meeting for the, their finance committee on Wednesday morning, and, and we'll bring it back. And then on, actually, Wednesday afternoon, I'm going to be at the Vocational Center for a deck-up presentation.
Jack, the one thing that we haven't covered yet is the remote. We were going to add remote meetings to the agenda.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
So we have a request from Bree Burbank, who emailed me. When, when she was at the last meeting, she did bring up her wish that we have remote meetings. She has a daughter at Carpenter School, but she lives in Virginia, so obviously, she's not going to be able to be here for every meeting.
Okay. And that's something that we can't really do at this point.
Well, I know it's very, it's, it's, it's hard enough to manage the two rooms.
Right. Right. Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you, is there a request to, because it's public on Wolfboro Community Television, but that's not accessible out of state? So is, is the request to do like a Zoom webinar style?
The, the request is to do a remote meeting, and with a remote meeting, then people, people The, the request is to do a remote meeting, and with the remote meeting, then people, people would have access to public input and so forth. And so, it would mean managing a lot of other equipment along with what's happening here now. And it does get, I know when we were doing remote meetings during the pandemic, I, I think it was difficult.
And the, the Wolfboro Community TV has the YouTube channel, so this, this is broadcast over YouTube as well, so at least they could see it. They just can't respond to our public input. That's, that's the biggest question.
Is there, I guess, the question I have is that we, we have a meeting going right now, right? That allows us to have the two-way communication with the folks in the other room.
Correct.
Would it, would it be okay to share that link so that others can? I don't know.
If you, if you do that, then, then we're providing, yeah, a third option. People need to be here on site. We're making, we're not offering a virtual meeting. We're offering an accommodation for, where people are physically present, which is different than offering a remote option.
Yeah, if I could just chime in, well, one thing is when we did do this, when the emergency order was in place, it was incredibly cumbersome. I mean, people were, you know, they were typing in online, they were calling Jack's phone. I mean, there was really a hard task to try and, you know, make it fair, actually, because it was sort of like everybody shouting at once. So there was just a logistical challenge. And the other thing is, once the emergency order went away, I mean, the state requires us to have physical meetings. So, you know, I, I, I can, I can appreciate that if a parent is distant and unable to come, that that creates a, an obstacle. But I, but I think this is just not something we can pull off.
I wasn't here during that time, so I appreciate that perspective.
Okay, moving on, I don't have any notes from Under-Chairman's report tonight. So we're gonna move on to committee reports. Charlene, I'll ask you to speak about academic affairs tonight.
Unfortunately, we did not meet because we didn't have a quorum. But what, we did have, I believe we started discussing the dress code last October. And as I also recall, I believe we requested input from, you know, various stakeholders. And, and so tonight, at our January meeting, it was, we were scheduled to have some, a couple of administrators come to our meeting to finally provide that input, and then unfortunately, we couldn't meet. So I'm guessing that'll be on our agenda for the next meeting. And I had also requested that perhaps we invite the entire administrative team, because there, there are concerns in the community about, let's say, inconsistent enforcement of our masking policy in our schools, which I felt was worthy of discussion. So that, I'm anticipating will be on our agenda as well for the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything from building, building and maintenance? I know Tim is not here, so.
Jack, the only thing we really talked about the last time was, was the issue with the bus fuse on the compressor for the school, high school.
Yeah.
And they resolved that literally faster than anybody thought they were going to.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, I have nothing under finance, other than the, the fact that the, again, the deliberative session is, is a Saturday, the 5th of February at 10:00 a.m. here in the Arts Center. Our next school board meeting is, that following Monday on the 7th, and it will be right here in the Arts Center as well. Nothing, I have nothing else on human resources at this point. Closing activities, advanced planning, you can see down, down below, Martin Luther King Day is Monday. And again, filing for the school board seats is January 19th to the 28th, and that's all. So now we're gonna go, public input, we'll start in the back, off the back room. Is there anyone like to speak in the back room?
Jessica Williams-Wolfer, I have a quick question about the contracts regarding paid federal holidays. Are those listed in the teacher contracts as paid federal holidays? Because if you just change the name from Columbus Day, which is the name of the holidays, Columbus Day at the federal level, not Indigenous Peoples' Day, does that mean the teachers don't get paid for that day?
No, the, the teacher will get paid for that day regardless of what, what we call it. It's, it's a holiday that we pay them for.
Are you gonna change it in the actual contract?
We, we might. It's, that's something that we look at right now as public input. It's a good question. We'll examine it and get back to you.
Great. I also want to talk a little bit about some of the expenses that the superintendent has incurred regarding some of the legal advice she's been getting for about right-to-know law, wearing masks. And I just want to make it part of the public record that it's not just the people requesting right-to-know information. It's actually the superintendent who doesn't necessarily understand the right-to-know law. And also, it's the board that's costing the district money, and by district, I mean taxpayers, regarding their mask mandates, protocols, getting special police details, et cetera. So this doesn't all have to happen. I mean, this one bill here is just $5,615 to get information about a right-to-know law. And if you all answered our questions, when we ask them in person or via email, we could save this money and not spend it on lawyers, but maybe spend it back on the kids. So I just wanted to add that to the public record.
Great, thank you. Public input from this room.
Thank you. Representative Brody DeShays from Wolfboro. First, I just want to thank the board for their fiscal restraint. Town of Wolfboro seeing that property tax decrease will be huge. For the most part, our town's budget in Wolfboro was level funded, other than an additional expense of about $300,000 that'll go towards roads. The county was able to level fund. The state was able to decrease our, the statewide education property tax, and then fulfill the loss of that revenue by using state surplus, by using money that's already existing in the education trust fund. So this is gonna be huge for a lot of people on fixed incomes in, in my community of Wolfboro. And I plan on running again, so in the community that I hope to serve and conquer after the next election, Tuftonboro, because they redistricted, and Wolfboro will now be with the town of Tuftonboro and Carroll County 6th District. I also just wanted to quickly say a few kind words about Krista A. Bear. Krista was a huge inspiration of mine when I first was growing up in 8th grade. She, during the, during the Romney Obama race, she was a huge reason. Her civics class, why I originally got involved in politics. She really inspired me to enter into public life. She inspired me, you know, with the civics education she provided me to run for the, the student, as a student representative for the school board in the current position that fell and so ably serves in, in that position. And that, that, that love for local government and state government encouraged me to run for state office. And the last conversation I had with Krista was asking her if she was actually going to consider running for the school board again, and, because I was considering it. And she did. She had fully intended, and I knew she would have served the office just as well the next three years as she would have in the previous. I'm very sad to see her gone. A kind soul like that that served on our board so ably, you know, those kinds of individuals are pretty rare. Her perspective, even though it came from a different side of the aisle as me, it was something that was refreshing. And I think that she is someone that we, students in this district that want to get involved in politics, or people in the general public want to get involved in politics, that she should really be considered a transpiration. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brody, for your kind words. Okay, if you go back up to the microphone, let me get somebody in the back, back room first. Anyone else in the back room like to speak? Now, one, one in the back and one up here, and then we'll cut off public input. It looks like nobody's in the back room, so we'll, we'll go to you and.
Okay, I just have a very quick question. If children ages 5 to 11 are vaccinated, but they don't have a booster, because there is no booster, will they be able to not quarantine if they have COVID? Just to clarify that.
Sure. They're considered fully vaccinated, because there is no option for an additional vaccination.
Okay, that was just a clarification. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so that's gonna be the end of public input for now. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just ask one quick question, because Brody brought this up, and I think it's on so many of our minds. Right now, what is, do we know yet what the impact on the budget is from our tax dollars going to these school vouchers? I know they're called something different. But how much money is this an impact on our district? And how much money will we be paying out for private educations?
It definitely does have an impact on the budget body, and we can get you some more specific figures. I, I am particularly worried about HB 607, which is an Expanded Education Freedom Act bill, which would provide from local tax dollars, up to 100% of a child's education in a private school. It, it's a great concern to me. It would have to be voted in, would have to be on the warrant, and voted in by the townspeople in all of our communities. And I don't see that happening, but then I didn't see the education freedom account voucher system happening this time either, so.
Okay, last comment.
I do have one more question after that, Kathy, sorry. So that actually is a concern on the HB 607. What if New Durham does vote in to have those funds, but Wolfboro doesn't? What does that do to our district overall? Because it's considered a town vote, not a district vote.
Yeah, the, the vote would be a district vote. So one, one town can vote one way, one town can vote another way. Combined, it would be a combined vote of the district itself. Because we're a cooperative school district, each town can, can vote the way they want to vote, excuse me. But, oh, just, just like any school board representative, you can vote for any school board representative around the district. It doesn't matter if you're winning your town.
But those are town votes, not district votes, based on the, based on the way HB 607 is written. You know, thank you, thank you.
So, so first, the House table, that House Bill 607, I voted the table. I was concerned about using local property tax dollars for a, for that program. I felt the state's current program, the education freedom accounts, was more than sufficient. I felt as if we still need to see how that program will have an effect on school budgets, on town budgets, on the state budget. It's currently 5,000% over budget. I think it's gonna be a great opportunity for many families that are 300%, no higher than 300% of the poverty level, right, their income of the poverty level. So we're talking about families that are making less than $80,000 a year, household income that are gonna be utilizing that program, that have two kids, right? House Bill 607, if it had passed the House and the Senate, and then was signed by the governor, which currently it's tabled in the House, so it's not moving on to the Senate or to the governor's office for the time being, it would have made it so then, any school district by warrant, right, so someone could have petitioned warrant, or the school board could have put it on the warrant, could adopt the program with a 60% vote, right? Now, the issue is, you can get rid of the, the program with a 60% vote, right? But every child that's in the local savings accounts, education savings accounts, are forever in that savings account until they hit the age of 19, right? Now, usually, the kids that, you know, are utilizing these dollars till the age of 19 are special education, but still, it would have shifted all the state spending for the education freedom accounts, right? Those would have been replaced by the local savings accounts, right? And the money provided would have been 80% of per pupil tuition provided by the school district, the property tax dollars, minus special education expenses, and the school would have been able to retain the adequacy dollars for every student that would be utilizing the local, the local program, right? Now, obviously, you know, this is tabled in the House. Apparently, it's pending, you know, a, a question of ought to pass out of the Education Committee. For it to be pulled off the table would be a, you know, 50% plus one vote of the New Hampshire House, right? Until, I believe it's February 26th, until the, until the deadline is for bills to have a second hearing, because it needs to have a second hearing in the Finance Committee. If it doesn't reach that deadline, then it's a 2/3rd vote in the House, right? I haven't heard any discussion from any colleagues on either side of the aisle to amend the bill. I know a lot of colleagues had concerns of using local property tax dollars for a, for an education choice program. Many prefer to use the state dollars for an education choice program, even if it's the adequacy dollars. I think the state's done a good job of handling, trying to handle public education and trying to handle loss of property taxes. I think, you know, many people have seen with the current kind of reductions that are happening across the state. But that's gonna be, you know, hopefully, a trend that continues, but the state needs to be vigilant and ensure that we're providing enough local aid to, to every school district, so they can provide an adequate education. I'm happy the Finance Committee, you know, the current adequacy formula that they're using was able to help the school board manage its budget and decrease its costs and decrease the amount of taxes it's collecting from residents. And so I hope that clarifies everything of what's going on with the state and education funding. Thanks.
I think the main question was whether or not it would be voted on by town, but it would be voted on as a cooperative district. So the votes would be compiled in total.
Yeah, it would, it would have to be the school district, exactly. Towns, like, the Board of Selectmen couldn't put on the warrant in Wolfboro, or a voter wouldn't put on the warrant in Wolfboro, would be our school district that would put it on the warrant. And voters that go to the deliberative section, session, that get it on to the warrant there. Everything would be done through the school district as it currently is.
Thank you, Brody. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move on. We have any closing comments? I normally don't do closing comments, but go ahead, Stephanie.
I just wanted to say two quick things. One, thank you so much to Scott Kiesler and Norman Adjutant for, Scott, for your efforts tonight, and also for the outstanding production of Mamma Mia in December. That was incredible. And thank you for ushering us members of the board and seeing the amazing work that you're doing behind the scenes. Just wanna say thank you so much. And I also wanted to echo Brody what you said about Krista A. Bear. I only got to serve alongside her on this board for a short time, but in that short time, she helped me learn the ropes, and I will always remember her, and I'm grateful that, for the small part that she played in my life.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Appreciate that. Charlene?
Well, I, I wish I could follow those lovely comments from Stephanie with something equally as positive. However, one of the speakers in our music room made demonstrably false statements about me, and I'll correct them now. As I recall, I very carefully worded my concerns at the last board meeting. And if anyone is interested in knowing what I actually said, they don't have to take my word for it. They can just go to the video of the 6th December EWRSD School Board Meeting, which is posted on YouTube. When I, when I made my comments, yes, I used the words breathtakingly ignorant, and I think I also said "or profoundly insensitive", and I was not referring to anything having to do with masks. I was referring to comments that various people had made during public input, calling our music room "the shower room" or "the showers", which was an obvious reference to the gas chambers used in the Holocaust. And I was referring to the, the statement that one person made at least twice during public input, that the cafeteria was like Auschwitz. And I, my comments were specifically aimed at what I still believe were breathtakingly ignorant or profoundly insensitive comments concerning a, an obvious false equivalency between our accommodations that we have made for people who refuse to adhere to our masking policy and the murder of millions of people which took place during the Holocaust. And as I said, you don't have to take my word for it. You can simply go to the video. And perhaps it would be good if whoever wants to hear the video, if they turn the volume up so they can indeed hear what I actually said. I also think that the speaker must have confused me with someone else because I was not wearing a little green mask. Cloth masks that I wear are exclusively from a Vermont company. They are three layers of tightly woven cotton with a pocket for a filter. And I would also like to say that if Dr. Leanna Nguyen ever compared one of our rooms in one of our buildings to Auschwitz or gas chambers, yes, I would think that she is breathtakingly ignorant or profoundly insensitive as well.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A, semicolon, 3, paragraph 2, for legal and personnel matters. Okay, move for Dr. Jim. Seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, all those in favor? Wendy? Stephanie? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene? Dana? And chair votes are as well. Thank you. We'll be back to adjourn if anybody wants to hang around. It shouldn't be too long, hopefully.